We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Just as a reminder, the county has issued a mask mandate, so masks are required indoors. We have masks at the back. If you are unwilling to wear a mask, we ask that you depart. You may watch on Channel 23 for Comcast. You can watch streaming at www.cityoflompoc.com, or you may listen to it on K-Peg 100.9 FM. And you may still participate in public comments with 805-875-8201. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne. Here. Can you hear in the back? Can I get a thumbs up? Awesome. Thank you so very much. City Attorney, a report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Council met tonight in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda, two labor negotiation items. Council had a discussion with staff and gave direction, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. We now invite Pastor Bernie Federman forward for invocation, and if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards, I'd appreciate it.
Let's join our hearts in prayer. Our gracious God, we gather in this room and at home with a full gamut of emotions, grateful for all you have done for us, the love of family and friends, this great community you provide for us, but also with emotions and prayers and concerns for those in Afghanistan and the devastation of lives as the death toll rises in Haiti. Comfort these dear people with your grace and peace and a miracle of safety. And as thousands of our troops are being sent in Afghanistan, we pray for their safety and protection. Bless every single person who has dedicated their lives to protecting this nation as well as the peoples of other nations. And closer to home, we pray for the brave firefighters from all over this state, some of which are represented by leadership in this very room, as they continue to fight horrific fires to the north and are willing to go into harm's way for protection of people and property. And with the emotion of joy, we ask for your blessing upon this brand-new school year. Watch over our children, keep them safe, fuel their desires to be curious, to learn, to develop their thinking minds, and be with our teachers and administrators as they serve the next generation. And tonight, we publicly celebrate and welcome our brand-new fire chief, Alicia Welch. We celebrate her decision to become a part of this community, and we pray for your favor upon her and her family and over the Lompoc Fire Department. Give Chief Welch much success and continued wisdom as she leads, and may many great things be accomplished under her command. We're thankful, dear God, for those who served to keep our city safe, our police and our fire department, and all city employees who serve us so well in keeping our city running. We ask your grace upon our city manager, our mayor, and our council, continue to give their wisdom, and we are grateful for their service, dedication, and commitment to this community and their heart of collaborative leadership. And for each of us, help us to ever be growing in our capacities of love and grace and compassion towards one another. With gratitude, we embrace the days ahead with trust, hope, expectation, and gladness. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Well, speaking of our new fire chief, the very first thing we have on our agenda tonight is the swearing-in of our newly-appointed fire chief, Alicia Welch. I'll ask our city clerk to take the position and then invite our fire chief and anyone else that you would like to have present with you. Repeat after me. I, Alicia Welch.
I, Alicia Welch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office of fire chief.
Discharge the duties of the office of fire chief.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And all my friends from LA are saying, real quick, sure, sure. But it will be real quick. I just want to say thank you for everybody that's here tonight, members of the community and the fire department and the city for being here tonight. It really is a special night for all of us. Honorable Mayor Osborne and Councilmembers Ball, Cordova, Vega, and Starbuck. We're just meeting tonight for the first time, but I am really happy to be here serving you and this community. As I kind of thought about this last role, I thought a lot about why I'm here. And city manager Trup, or Trup U, and Gabe, and your team, Dean, Sarah, Christie, all the members of the management team and your staff, I looked at that when I looked at the city and made a decision based on the team here. And so I'm going to work hard for you, and I'm going to ask you also to work hard for us because we have a lot of work to do as a fire department. The media asked me, what does it mean, you know, to you to be the fire chief? And what does it mean to be the female, a female fire chief? And I think for any of the people in the room who have assumed this role or the police chief, Chief Mariani that's here, it's an important role. It's heavy. It's a responsibility that we all take very seriously. And so I don't take the role of being a fire chief lightly, and I don't take the role of being a role model in the community lightly either. But I am here based on a lot of support that I had, the role models I had right here in public safety, my parents, my wife who supported me for 17 years. Don't cry. I said no crying tonight. So, but for 17 years, I've had a lot of support and a lot of good role models. But where I started was Los Angeles, and I was there almost 27 years. And my classmate from my academy is here tonight, Chief Robert Nelson's here. And that is because we're family. And another role model and mentor is here, Chief Al Poyers here. And we shared something in common, and that's our core values of service, integrity, professionalism, trust, and innovation. And so that's what I learned as a young firefighter, and I carried those values with me for a long time. And not only did I have to learn them, but I had to really model them and believe them. And I started in 1990. And in 2004, I was very lucky to get accepted from the Naval Postgraduate School and study the area of homeland security. And there, I became a part of a whole other network of military service members and first responder professionals. And that's a network that I still am a part of today. And so when I decide on how I want to move forward in my career, I always have this network to go back to, like last year when we were challenged with COVID-19. I had a network that I could go to to help support and guide me through some of the challenges that we all faced. Then I retired from the fire department, and I told those guys I was retiring and I wouldn't be going back to work. And so you can imagine how they laughed at me when I called to ask if they would please be my references for the next job I took, which was in 2018, I became the fire chief in Golden, Colorado. And although I was there less than three years, I became part of a family there, too. And our values were integrity, loyalty, accountability, service, and trust again. And I went on board on that team because I felt like I believed in those values. I believed in the leadership of that city, of that team, and I wanted to go work with them. And so the short time I was there, we accomplished a lot, a lot of work that we're all really proud of, and a lot of them are watching tonight. And so I feel lucky to be a part of that team for the time I was there. And then in 2019, I made one more career choice, and that was to become a student of executive development through a program with International Association of Fire Chiefs. And they have a program called Fire Service Executive Development Institute, and it's built, made of fire service leaders from upper ranks who aspire to be fire chiefs. And although I was a fire chief already, I applied for the program because I knew that I had areas that I needed still to develop. And in that group, there's 19 of us, and one of my classmates is here in the back. Chad Augustine is now the fire chief of Pasadena Fire. And all of our classmates and peers are watching tonight, and they're fire chiefs and aspiring fire chiefs from all over the country. And so I have this family and my extended family of nieces and nephews and my fire family that we have these common core values that we believe in and we embody. And so I got an email a couple months ago from a former fire family member here, and that was Chief Kurt Ladipal. And Chief Ladipal, in one line, said, "You would be perfect for this, Alicia." And he sent me the link to the job. And so I talked to Kurt a little bit about the job, and he told me about Lompoc's core values. And so I wondered, do they align with my fire history core values, and do they align with my personal core values? Humility, customer focus, teamwork, professionalism. And the last thing he said is, "Alicia, the most important core value to us here in Lompoc is family." And so all these core values that I've been living and, you know, striving for my whole career, they have those same values here. And it's a department that is full of great people. They're aggressive firefighters, he said. They care about the community. And he said, "They'll support you, Alicia." And so I talked to my family about it. And so he's probably, either you can either thank Chief Ladipal or you can curse Chief Ladipal, whatever you want. And Kurt, if you're watching tonight, the jury's out, but thanks, Kurt, for believing in me and telling me about the job. And you guys back there, my new family, there's two families that are back here. It's the Santa Barbara area fire chiefs that are here that before I got here were putting their arms around me and welcoming me and telling me about the area and the challenges. And we leave our egos at the door. I got that speech, and I'm all for that because I have never been one to get things done through an ego. So I think we're going to get along fine to my new Santa Barbara brothers and my Lompoc Fire Department family, my new deputy chief. I promoted somebody today, Wendy. I'm going to work hard for you guys, and I think, as you've seen by our last two days of meetings, I'm going to expect you to work hard, too. But we're going to get great things done together. And I think I would really be remiss if I didn't say to our interim fire chief, Brian Federman, who's back there with his family, and I appreciate you guys being here tonight, too. This is a man who, for a year and a half, led a department through a pandemic, through a budget cycle, through some really, really big challenges, and he led with his heart. He led you guys. I can't tell you how he represented you, not only to me, but to the area chiefs. And some of the work that he was able to accomplish is really amazing to look at at the level, Brian, that you're in. So you are going to make an amazing fire chief someday, but good luck as a deputy chief in Santa Barbara City, I guess your next stop. Your legacy will be embedded here, I can promise you that. And Chief Curris, who's here, and Chief Ladipal, who I think is here, will work hard to ensure your guys' legacies, and we're going to do more great things together. So I look forward to all the work with my new Lompoc family. And now, all I have to say is let's go forth and do good.
Well, in honor of your arrival and official swearing-in, we have an amazing cupcake cake in the back, so we are going to take a recess to celebrate and welcome you, and we will reconvene in 15 to 20 minutes. And everyone, enjoy. If you are departing, please take cupcakes with you. Otherwise, council will consume them after you've all departed. I appreciate everyone for turning out and being so supportive. That is what makes Lompoc so special. Not only did Chief Welch say that we're family, it really does feel that way across all our departments and our community. So, welcome. Next on our agenda is the city manager report. Mr. Trup.
Hey. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think I'm going to, I'll go real quick through here because we have a presentation tonight. It's about the launch coming up in September for the Landsat, the 50th anniversary of our satellite launch, and we have a short presentation from Ginger Butcher. But I'm going to, I just want to do a couple quick updates here. It's mostly through the electric utilities area. We have three apprentices that have journeyed out, successfully completing the city's line work apprenticeship program, and have attained the status of the 12KV Journey Line Worker. So that's great. That's a five-year process to get those people up and trained, so that's a big accomplishment for everybody. The electric staff tested 20 potential apprentices on 813 and had very high test pass rates. They'll continue on to the next part of that. They're also working on testing a current 12KV journeyman line worker in the coming days to fill an existing vacancy, so we're slowly getting back to a full staff at the electric side of the business. The energy market, though, it does continue to be volatile. However, the city's portfolio is stable at this time. Staff continue to monitor the market conditions and will keep the council apprised. So you might remember back in the wintertime, Texas had huge energy bills go through the roof. Well, we have, we plan out far enough that we hopefully have everything stabilized and won't have a similar incident at all. And then the man behind the curtain here, as they say, is Alex EMO. He is the new peg station technician, so Bill has moved up to the manager level after Greg's, Ratcliffe's retirement. So he's behind the scenes, no one can see him, but he's monitoring all the tap TV for us and making sure we're up and running. So the other one now is Ginger Butcher is going to be doing a short presentation on the upcoming Landsat satellite launch and anniversary of the 50th anniversary. So I'm going to ask her to take it over. She's doing this blind, so we're going to be via phone. She'll tell us when to go forward with the slides.
You're live in the council meeting.
Oh, hi. Good evening, and thank you for having me speak to your council. I'm Ginger Butcher. I work with NASA, and I work on the Landsat 9 mission as the public outreach and communications lead. And I wanted to kind of present to you what we have going on around your town and how we've been working with City of Lompoc and all of the fantastic folks that have been helping us put these events together. So I guess the presentation's probably up on the screen, so if we could go ahead and go to the next slide. And this is just a slide that kind of gives you an overview of all of the things that are happening this week, and I'm going to walk through each one of them and kind of give a little bit of what we have planned for each of those. Next slide. So Sunday, September 12, this one, we're going to kick off all of the events going on for Landsat Week. The launch is going to be on September 16, which is that Thursday, around 11 o'clock in the morning. And we're going to start on Sunday. We're going to have an unveiling or ceremony of the new mural in downtown Lompoc, and it's going to be the 50th anniversary. And here is an image of it, semi-completed. I just saw it last weekend, and it's fantastic. We're so excited about it. So at 12 o'clock, we're going to have a nice, short ceremony with the mayor doing a proclamation for Landsat Week. We have the representatives from USGS and NASA, the project manager for Landsat 9 on both sides of these two agencies. They will be there to say a few words, as well as the corporate sponsors, those who've been involved with the building of the Landsat spacecraft and instruments that are going on the spacecraft. So Landsat Week, we've got a bunch of stuff going on, so let's go to it. Next slide. Also, the same day, Sunday, that morning at 8:00 in the morning, we're going to be kicking off a GEO tour, which some of you may have already seen on the website. They've done a fantastic job marketing the GEO tour. We're, I'm not going to go into this whole thing about what GEO caching is, but essentially it's an app that uses GPS that directs you to different places where you can find these caches. They can be small, little tiny, film canister size or Tupperware size, where you then log that you found it, and you can add that to your claim of finding GEO caches. We've put nine Landsat-themed GEO caches around the town, and we'll be working on that with your Parks and Rec Department. Mario has been fabulous to work with, coming up with these great locations to put them in. So we're going to kick off with the GEO tour that they've been promoting, both through the Explore Lompoc Tourism Board and also through the GEO Caching Headquarters, has been promoting this GEO tour, which is the first GEO tour in Southern California that they've done. So there's been a lot of excitement. I did hear about 71 people have signed up last week, and that's when they just announced it. So it should be bringing a lot of folks to come and watch and find these GEO caches. So there'll be an event in the morning at the Dewey Center, and then an event in the afternoon, just where people come together. When they find all nine, they get some swag that'll be handed out at the Hilton Garden. This GEO tour is actually going to continue. This is just not one-day event. This is going to go on through the next year. In July 2022, it's actually the 50th anniversary of Landsat, so this is something that we can continue to highlight and promote. And we have some special coins that they get if they get all nine. And Explore Lompoc has come up with some of the GEO tour coins, and then NASA has also purchased another 250 coins that will be handed out, kind of as an incentive to get people to come to Lompoc, that they'll be able to hand out, like after launch and through the 50th anniversary the following July. Next slide. On Monday, actually, this is Monday through Thursday, we have an Earth as Art exhibit that's going to be installed at the Grossman Gallery at your Lompoc library. The Landsat has been collecting these amazing images of our planet for the last 50 years. And what they've done is they've created an Earth as Art, kind of taking some of these images, false color images, pumping up the colors, making them almost look like abstract art, or really fantastic, stunning displays. And they've mounted them on canvas, they've kind of broken them apart and making them kind of, like, as you can see here, they're separate images that kind of come together. It's a really cool idea that now we're kind of putting into a gallery space. We've been putting it online, actually, USGS has been putting this online for a few years now. So we're going to have this gallery exhibit going on, but in addition to that, we're going to be having installations of these Earth as Art displays at a variety of the locations around town, from hotels, the wineries, coffee houses, restaurants, even City Hall. We're also working with the STEAM Academy and the school district to introduce the teachers and students to the really cool Landsat images that we can get. And part of what were happening at the library, as you can see here, we have these giant floor puzzles that the kids can work with and kind of put together as a kind of a hands-on tactical, tactile kind of activity. And in addition to all the displays around town, they're working on banners to go at each of these locations that will then promote the main exhibit at the library, pushing everybody to the library. Hopefully, with the COVID restrictions and everything, people will still be able to enjoy coming to the library, even though they'll have to wear their mask. But the gallery exhibit will be wonderful, and everyone will enjoy coming to visit. Next slide. Also on Monday, we're going to have a book signing. This is a book I published back in 2000, and we're just reprinting it, like literally this month is getting reprinted, and we're going to have them drop shipped directly to the library. Fingers crossed, we'll get them, but we'll have 300 books that we'll be able to give away for free to anyone who wants to come to the library at 3:00 on that Monday, and I'll be there signing the books. We're also have been talking to Jessica, the youth coordinator there at the library, about doing an activity, like a hands-on collage activity. You'll see some photos of that later. We could be doing that at the library for the kids while people are waiting for the books, so that everyone's not kind of crowded in a line. Again, we're trying to really keep in mind the COVID restrictions and keeping people spaced and keeping as much of this outdoors as possible, but in this case, we'll be indoors doing the book signing. Next slide. So Tuesday, our big event is doing a So Tuesday, our big event is doing a Landsat trivia night. The Christopher with Hangar 7 has been gracious enough to open up the venue just for our group. This is going to be a invitation-only group for, invitation-only event for our Landsat Project folks and people who've been working with Landsat. But I really thought that it's great that we're having something every day. I mean, we have the exhibit at the library going on all week, but it'd be nice to have something that we can promote publicly on that Tuesday. So I've been working with Mario about coming up with a family fun night at the Aquatic Center. And we can open up the roof and have it kind of be outdoorsy. I have a couple volunteers that'll be able to work that event while I'm also working the trivia night and do some, a little bit of NASA-themed type of activities there at the Aquatic Center. But that would also be Tuesday evening. We're still working on the times and the specifics and sign up, but we're working on having something that we can have, promote on that Tuesday. Next slide. On Wednesday, we're, have a, one of our science team members, Landsat Science Team members, Martha Anderson with the USDA, has been working with Gallo Wineries and a group of researchers with, on a experiment they call GrapeX. And they've basically been looking at how they can create tools around Landsat data to help vintners target the amount of water and when to water the vineyards. Because we can look at what's called evaporatranspiration, which is essentially how much water is being transpired off the plant and evaporated from the ground, and really fine-tune when you want to water and stress the grapes. It's a really fantastic presentation. They're going to put this together in a very public-friendly, non-science, kind of science cafe, if you will, way. And so we're going to have this talk Wednesday evening. This is after the Landsat Science Team is having their meeting on Tuesday and Thursday. So, I mean, sorry, on Tuesday and Wednesday. So Wednesday evening, they'll be out in Lompoc at Montmartre Tasting Room. Their beautiful outdoor space, 6,000 square feet. Again, trying to keep people outside, keeping the COVID restrictions in mind, the social distancing. But this would be a fantastic event for anybody who's interested in how satellite data can help vintners and agriculture. Next slide. So Thursday's the big day. We're going to launch at 11 o'clock, roughly, about a 30-minute window, hoping that the clouds and fog will cooperate. This is just a selection of some of the activities that we're going to have. We have a sticker mosaic, which is kind of a, if you think of a color by number with little stickers that they can put on. And throughout the, the time that they're there, this image will start to kind of develop. We have a collage activity, cut and paste. Basically, if anyone remembers The Very Hungry Caterpillar, some of the other books by Eric Carl, it's, we're using Landsat scenes as those collage papers. So very free-form. Anybody can make a collage with these papers. It's going to be kind of a fun, hands-on thing. And plus, we have some basic coloring pages and so forth. Next slide. And we also have some more science-themed activities, hands-on demos. We've developed a do-it-yourself, DIY spectrometer. We're calling Stella. 3D-printed and some components people can buy online. But we'll actually have one already put together that we can show basically people how the Landsat Satellite works and using this device and measuring how much of the different parts of the spectrum are being reflected off of plants, dirt, soil, minerals. That's basically how we use Landsat Satellites. And how the instruments on Landsat work, they use filters to isolate different parts of the spectrum to take their measurements. So the Ball Aerospace Company, that corporation who has built the OE2 instrument, which will be flying on Landsat, has a filter activity where kids can use filters and look at different things. And then we also have an activity using the FLIR camera, this IR camera, to try, basically as an analog as to how our thermal instrument, the Tiers 2 instrument, will be working and how we can actually see, you know, ice in Antarctica in the dead of winter and watch iceberg scrape off and that type of thing. So these are the types of hands-on science demos that we're going to have on Thursday at the airport for the viewing. We're thinking about it being about 9:00 to 12:00 as the time period. The launch is around 11:00. Give some people some time. We also enlarged the tents that we were going to have to space all of the exhibits and tables 12 feet apart to, again, promote social distancing and hopefully mitigate any COVID restrictions at the time. Next slide. Another really cool thing that's going to happen at the airport is our colleagues at USGS have, are basically going to create this life-size model of Landsat 9 using this exhibit structure you see here. That'll basically, that tower will be the spacecraft, and then the panels that are going off will be the solar panels. And so it'll be 40 feet by 15 feet tall. It'll be quite fantastic. So we're planning on doing a lot of our, our Facebook Live interviews, other types of photos and live shots, plus folks who are visiting can get their photo taken in front of this instrument. And we'll be bringing those floor puzzles as well. People, we made one specifically for Lompoc. It's the, the area there. It's kind of Santa Barbara County. It's a fantastic satellite image. Can't wait for you guys to see it. And then basically make that into a puzzle, which I believe, I'll talk to my American View colleagues, but they're the group that is funded through USGS. I believe that we'll be leaving one of these floor puzzles with the library or group you can use in the future. Next slide. After launch, when everybody's ready to just kick back and relax and celebrate, fingers crossed, we're going back to Montmartre Tasting Room because of the beautiful outdoor space that they have. There's a group called the Ladies of Landsat. Just a group of women who are science system engineers with Landsat. And they promote other women getting involved in geospatial, Landsat STEM careers and activities. They will be doing kind of a conversation with ladies of Landsat. We're hoping to get some of the pioneers from the program. Virginia Norwood is one. She's 94. She was an engineer back in 1972, one of the only female engineers at Hughes, who, Hughes Aerospace, that developed the first instrument that was on Landsat 1. It's a stunning story. We call her the mother of Landsat. We're really hoping that we'll be able to interview her. We're not promoting her name specifically with this because, you know, she may be tired. She may not be up for it. So if that works, we're going to try and do that interview with Virginia Norwood there at the Montmartre Tasting Room and other ladies of Landsat who are involved in Landsat. And then later, they're going to have a Landsat for Climate Action. And we have a variety of women scientists with, using Landsat data and how they're basically looking at the, for using, developing tools and applications, not just using the Landsat data, but actually working that into some operational aspects to help with climate change. And they'll be going, we'll kind of like have kind of a round robin, like they'll kind of get up in about five minutes and just talk about the research that they're doing. And this is like a nice kind of casual, you know, learning about science, learn about what's going on, have a glass of wine. It should be a lot of fun. So this is kind of our post-launch activities to kind of keep that, the activity and excitement going about the launch. And that, that pretty much the, covers the big events that are going on in Lompoc. And if we go to the next slide, just a final note about some of the campaigns that we have going on, if anyone wishes to promote them or check them out. We have Landsat Crafts, which is people who are inspired by Landsat images, like this one of the Canola Fields in Canada. Someone did like an embroidery of the Canola Fields. And then we also have a Camp Landsat, which is something that my team is working on, where every week we're putting out new content. We have a story map and videos, hands-on activities, visualizations, things to do. Fun fact about each of the areas that Landsat's involved in. Landsat's a very unique mission in that we cover so many different, different fields. So we work, you know, in geology and agriculture, water quality, forests, look at urban heat islands, assessing disasters, watching ice and climate, the, you know, what's happening with our icebergs breaking off and how much ice is out there. Health and wellness with algal blooms that are happening in lakes, and also looking at biodiversity. So the, each week, we're looking at a different theme. And right now, we are about to launch, I guess we're on our urban. And disaster's come next week, and then we have three more weeks. Three more weeks before launch. Ah. So anyway, so this is just kind of, some of the campaigns we're doing this summer. And that is essentially what we have going on for Landsat Week in September.
Thank you, Ginger, for that presentation. I really appreciate all the work your team has been doing to pull this all together. I look forward to all of us coming out and exploring Landsat and viewing the launch. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for the city? Oops, city manager raises his hand. Does anyone have any questions for the city manager before we move on?
Oh, I do have one, one last article of information. Just, everyone should be receiving the current ballot for the recall that's going to be going on. So I want to make sure regardless of how you vote, flip the ballot over because the Lompoc City ballot measure is on the back of it. I just want to make sure people know to flip it over, that it's there.
Thank you for that reminder. Seeing no questions for the city manager, we will go on to the consent calendar. I will open the floor for consent calendar. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on consent calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
While we give a chance for the phones to ring, I'll go ahead and read the consent calendar process. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one calling in, we will close public comment on consent calendar, and I'll bring it back to council for questions or motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yes. Mr. Trub, I got a question on item two here. Is, are animal services in Lompoc open or closed now?
I just got noticed that it's, the actual building is temporarily closed. But they did, before this, they did close it to the animals themselves, and they have them up in Santa Maria or down in Santa Barbara due to the conditions that are in the back where the animals are actually.
Right. That's what I recalled. So we're not getting any kind of prorate on this at all. We're paying for services for Santa Maria and Santa Barbara to provide for Lompoc, basically, with this approval.
If you have a dog or a cat that's picked up, it will be transferred, correct, up to the, to there. And this, this small change, you'd already, all the council had approved it. We had actually put in there a request to have them also do, and I know it's funny, look at roosters, you know, having them be the person to take that, and as well as horses. We had a resident with a horse in their backyard. Wasn't quite big enough for it, but the current contract didn't have that. So we put that in there potentially for them to do. We are going back to make a change to our ordinances, so it would align better. So in the meantime, we just had to come back with.
Yeah. Last, last time we approved this, I remember we were going to, we were supposed to receive better services, et cetera, et cetera. But now we're going to Santa Maria to retrieve a pet, but thank you.
Just for clarification, after meeting with the Director of the Animal Services, you don't have to go to Santa Barbara or Santa Maria to retrieve your pet. If you are able to connect with them and identify, they are delivering your pet back to Lompoc. So it is not a requirement to travel to the other community. And they are holding regular adoptions in our community. They just held one this past weekend. And they are open on Tuesday afternoons from 2:30 to 4:30 for walk-ins. And they now have an ongoing service with a room that has food and supplies. If you have a pet and are on hard times, they don't want you to have to give it up. So you can come and get free food and free supplies. And I believe that's also on Tuesday that it's open, but you can call and make an appointment to pick those up. All right. Any other questions, or do I have a motion to approve consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We've already had some staff presentations and announcements and requests, so I'm going to move on to our oral communications. This is for matters not on our current agenda. You have three minutes. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Floor is now open. In room.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I oppose the unlawful mask mandate. Conducting medical experiments on citizens without their consent is a violation of the Nuremberg Code of 1947, which has just recently been reactivated. It is also a violation of our Constitution and a violation of your oath of office. In addition, Dr. Birx and Dr. Fauci acknowledged in emails the masks are ineffective against the virus. They agreed to continue promoting the mask because they thought it would help people feel safe. The military has linked 15,000 mask-related deaths to Dr. Birx's TV interview where she stated people should wear masks inside and outside. She's been arrested by the military and faces execution in tribunals. These crimes against humanity are not in the criminal code. They're being handled in tribunals. The face masks are not supported by science to protect people from the virus. Governor Cuomo was just arrested Sunday night by the military and is being sent to Gitmo for crimes against humanity he committed during the virus. And we're, I think most of us are familiar with some of the things that he did. In addition to the Nuremberg Code and the Constitution, it's also a violation of participation in public accommodation, Regulation 28 CFR 36.202. Also, it's a violation of business setting lawful compliance, CFR 36.203. In addition, discrimination of the U.S. Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title II, Title III, and Title VI. I urge you to honor your oath of office and discontinue your compliance with crimes against humanity. Those in authority, like the Health Director for the county, is my understanding, will be charged with crimes against humanity. be charged with crimes against humanity for what they have required of the rest of us.
Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you.
I'm John McReynolds, 409 South A Street. I'm here representing the Kahoots Committee of Lompoc. And we want to urge the city to fund an unarmed mobile crisis response program. And this will free up police. You know what? My glasses, I took them off because I couldn't read. Now I'm gonna try them this way. We'll find out. Freeze up the police to respond to calls, uh, that's not right. To respond, to focus on crime while the Kahoots Service will respond to calls involving homelessness, intoxication, and mental illness. Nationally, 21% of police officers' time is spent responding to calls about people in these categories, homelessness, intoxication, and mental illness. For a city and a, and a nation amidst a crime wave, this needs to be rethought, we think. There's a better way. Our Kahoots consultant, Ben Adam Klimer, worked for the original Kahoots program in Eugene, Oregon. And he's now consulting with cities in California to set up programs like his, to relieve police of the social work burden, those 21% of their hours. Huntington Beach is one of them. They launched their program called Be Well two weeks ago, August 2nd. This production, introduction of Be Well into Huntington Beach really supports us in two different ways, says police spokesperson Jennifer Carey. One, it allows us to send crisis counselors who are better equipped to handle mental health issues than a police officer to incidents of mental health crisis. And second, when a police officer responds, it sometimes has the potential of escalating a situation even more. Not only does it serve our residents better, it also assists the police department in allowing our officers to respond to incidents of crime in a more effective manner. I think she means get there faster. By introducing this program, we're allowing our cops to do cop work. Other cities Mr. Klimer is working with include Garden Grove, Petaluma, Santa Cruz, and Vallejo. Petaluma launched their crisis response team called SAFE in early July. We also want to thank Chief Mariani, Mariani for his support on this and thank all of you for your openness and learning about the benefits of an unarmed crisis response team like this. Finally, we urge the citizens of Lompoc who got a ballot today, like this one, to vote yes on major Q. It's possible some of the tax revenue could be used to support a Kahoots-type program. Thank you.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, this is Leah from Lompoc. And I just had to push back a little bit on the first speaker. Just to clarify for everyone on this planet, having, being asked to wear a mask is not a crime against humanity. So let's just not normalize that, what she just said. It's just a mask. It's a piece of cloth that's helping stop the spread of a pandemic. That is why the pound closed, because people aren't taking this seriously. So once again, not a crime against humanity, that's tin hat speak. It's just a piece of cloth. And it would be nice if ever so badly everyone on the dais was wearing their mask properly. So it's still out there. So everyone stay safe. It's not a hoax. If you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. Okay, bye.
Seeing no other people rise and no one else call in, we will close the oral communications and bring it back to the next item on the agenda. Now, item number three is seek direction of the Lompoc City Council on the appointment of one or two council members to participate on the Electric Utility Strategic Business Plan Advisory Committee. And we have our utility director, Charles Berry, to present.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. So I am very excited to be in front of you tonight to talk about this issue. We get the privilege of preparing what I believe will be the first-ever Electric Utility Strategic Business Plan. So that's a very important milestone as we work towards trying to chart our path forward and figure out how we navigate the volatile waters of the electric utility industry and position the utility to better serve the community. So, in brief, I just want to give you a couple of comments about what the Electric Utility Strategic Plan is. And it's an organizational tool to guide deliberate strategic decisions in pursuit of excellence in government and achieving performance milestones. So this is an iterative effort. It won't be a one-and-done. This is an ongoing process that we will continually revisit to ensure we're meeting the priorities of the council and the priorities of our community. So with that, staff is looking towards council to appoint one or two members to participate on the advisory steering committee for the strategic plan.
Thank you. Questions for Councilmember Ball?
Can you elaborate just a little bit about what the goal of this business plan is?
Sure. The goal of the business plan ultimately is to allow us to define what our targets into the future are. So we can assess where we are as an organization now and where do we want to be three years, five years, 10 years from now. And this allows us to establish very critical criteria and milestones so that when we make important business decisions, we say, okay, how does this align with the strategic plan? How do we get further towards the goalposts by making this decision?
For the potential volunteers, what's the commitment here for that?
Uh, the commitment will be fairly modest, approximately three-quarters of one day. And the, the tentative timeline is towards the end of September, but we can provide those specific dates.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Is the utility commission involved in this?
They will be.
Just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova?
CJ, I noticed that there wasn't really any mention as to who is going to be on this advisory committee, other than the request for one or two council members. Who is going to be on this committee?
So it will involve one or two of the council members, myself, the city manager, our electric utility manager, our financial services director, our HR manager, a member of the utility commission, and then two members at large to be defined as the current proposal. So we want to make sure that we grab potentially a member of the public to represent the business community, as well as a member of the public to represent our residential customers.
And, um, so this is not something that the utilities commission should be looking at or would be looking at, since there's already a utilities commission?
So the utilities commission, in terms of nominating a member to serve on the advisory committee, will be involved. As the strategic plan is developed, it will absolutely go to the utility commission for their recommendation to council.
And I know that we've been talking a whole lot about the rate study and that that's coming and that's coming. Is that something that's going to be also looked at in this strategic plan?
Yeah, thank you for asking that, absolutely. So all aspects of the, the business operation will be looked at. The rate study is indeed coming, we are working on that, but it will be reflected as a deliverable out of the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
I'm interested.
All right, which is great because you are the alternate for NCPA. I'd be happy to volunteer as the representative to NCPA. Anyone else interested? Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm not. I have a power stroke diesel, but I think Councilmember Ball in a Prius is a perfect fit. Thank you for volunteering.
Thirty-five dollars to go 500 miles, I'll take it.
So, um, yeah, I think it's important to have the, since this is a strategic plan, somebody who lives the life and can speak to those issues. And I would be happy to be present to speak to our ongoing known issues and how to work with NCPA and making sure our strategic plan aligns and moves us forward. Councilmember Cordova?
Um, not that I have any more time in my day, but I actually would like to be on this committee.
Great, all right. So I will make a motion that Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Cordova serve as our representation for the strategic plan.
Second.
And that has a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you so very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. And information will be forthcoming on dates and times and appreciate and advance your participation. This is a very, very important endeavor so that we can continue to prioritize where the rate period's very valuable money is spent.
Thank you. All right, item number four is a public hearing for adoption of Resolution Number 6445, parentheses 21, amending the environmental review guidelines and traffic study guidelines, TA 2102, incorporating California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA as it's known, thresholds of significance to the established vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. And we have our planning manager, Brian Halverson, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to introduce the item because we did hire an expert to help us with some of the, the work, the technical work in order to implement new legislation under SB 743. Because this is work that we can't do in-house, we hired a consultant, DKS, with, and Jim Damkowicz will give a presentation in just a second. But I just wanted to emphasize that it is important to have these new thresholds when we're reviewing new projects that come in, because right now the city is not compliant with that new legislation. So the consultant has come in and done the technical work to help us create these thresholds. And so he has a short presentation and then after that, there'll be plenty of time for questions if you have that. So it's like, Jim, to come on up and, at this time.
Mayor Chairman, as at the council, this may be the planning commission meeting presentation, but that was a good one too. It's all right. Again, my name is Jim Damkowicz. I am the managing director of DKS Sacramento. And we were the firm that assisted your staff to address this new state requirement. And that new state requirement is Senate Bill 743. It was actually signed into law back in 2013. Took them seven years, took them, the state, to kind of figure out how this would all work. And really, the bottom line, which was created the paradigm shift in how transportation is looked at as part of SEQA, is that traditionally level of service or operations or the amount of delay that's experienced was typically the criteria for addressing impacts or defining impacts under SEQA. But starting July 1st, 2020, which when 743 actually went and became implemented statewide, it has now changed to vehicle miles of travel. So it's, it's not the characteristics of a vehicle trip or the amount of discomfort the motorist feels, it's now simply how much they drive and how long they drive. So how much distance does an automobile travel and how much of that travel is attributable to a, a project, a proposed project? So the idea is that we need to quantify the number of miles driven when our project is proposed. I can just say, next slide. Well, I'll just say, when I, when I first got here and saw how many people were here, I was saying, wow, the city of Lompoc's really excited about VMT. But that did not turn out to be the case. So, so real quick, just LOS again. That's how much delay you're, you experience as a motorist, either on a roadway segment or at an intersection. You can establish a baseline by simply counting the traffic, which was very convenient and nice. It was very location-specific, which meant that if an impact is identified or was identified, the mitigation was very specific and very site-specific. And that was actually nice, because you could really see the nexus between the impact and a mitigation to alleviate that impact. VMT is a systemic measure. It is not a measure of congestion, you got to keep that in mind. The state doesn't care about congestion, believe it or not. They just care about how much vehicle travel occurs. And, and the only way you can really calculate VMT, unfortunately, good or bad, is with models. And so it's an analytic process. So VMT must be modeled, it's a system-wide assessment. You want to look at the full trip length, which means that a lot of models get developed with boundaries. A citywide model only stops at the city boundaries. That's not good enough. You got to address the entire trip, that portion of the trip that occurs outside the jurisdiction. So these are kind of game changers with respect to transportation planning and engineering firms, as well as public works departments across the state. The mitigation for, for VMT is, is much more difficult, as you can imagine, because it is a system-wide measure. But it, it kind of acts the same. Once you identify your VMT threshold, it's a line in the sands. So you, you look at your project, your proposed project. If it goes over that threshold, it's a significant impact. If it falls underneath that threshold, it's less than significant. So the way SEQA, the mechanics of SEQA stays the same, but you're just using a different metric to define what an impact is. So what did the city ask my firm to do? Well, first, we had to establish a baseline, because the way the thresholds work, it's the Office of Planning and Research say you have to be 15% below your baseline average. So establishing the baseline VMP, you can look at countywide, you can look at regional, which would be your city, and then Vandenberg Village and, and various areas around the city of Lompoc, or you can look at just within the city. And I'll show you some examples of how that, choosing a different baseline average kind of changes how much flexibility a city, your city, has with respect to project review. The second thing is establishing the thresholds themselves. And I already mentioned, they have to be 15% below the average. That's OPR guidance. It's not, OPR's guidance does not have the weight of law, but they, they make it very clear. If you don't really follow their guidance, you're kind of setting yourself up potentially for legal issues down the road potentially to be challenged. We also had to identify screening criteria for SEQA streamlining. And that's also very important to keep in mind. This is a new state requirement. Yes, it's different, but really the bottom line is for streamlining. So it's really trying to provide ways that you, as a city, can actually make things easier for the kinds of developments that potentially you, you'd like to see. As part of that, we updated the city's environmental procedures and TIA guidelines, traffic compact analysis guidelines, and also developed a analysis tool that can be used in lieu of a travel demand model, which is a monster kind of, SB CAG, your regional agency, has the countywide model that was the basis for our analysis. But, you know, it'd be arduous to require the city staff to use that model or a developer to use that model every time they had to, to do a VMT analysis. So instead, we use the travel demand model, did a, a lot of 80-plus model runs to actually figure out how the VMP characteristics, characteristics would work for a given land use type in a given location within the city. And we put that in a sketch planning tool that's very easy to use and doesn't require a lot of time. So it's a nice resource for the city. Okay, so the screening criteria- Okay, so the screening criteria, what's that? So the state allows any proposed project that's within a half-mile of high-quality transit. Unfortunately, right now, COLT and its service that it provides does not meet the criteria for high-quality transit. That requires 15-minute headways during the peak periods. But at some point, if you get there, this screen will come into play. And if there's a development within a half-mile of a high-quality transit line, it doesn't have to do a VMT analysis. In other words, they don't have to deal with transportation as part of SEQA. Another screen is just a small project. Any project that generates less than 110 daily trips gets a free pass. For residential development, if it's affordable housing or non-market-rate housing, it gets a pass. Obviously, if, you know, the housing crisis is the state's number-one issue right now. And so this speaks directly to that, that policy. If you're retail, and you can show that you're local serving rather than regional serving, you also get a pass. And how we do that, we define it by any retail establishment that is less than 50,000 square feet in size. If it's over that, then it's considered regional serving. Now, any, one of these can be challenged by the developer, as long as they provide very solid documentation that supports what they're saying. It's open to, uh, you know, examination. But this is the criteria that's being used as a default moving forward. For infrastructure projects, so these are roadway projects. Clearly, any non-capacity increasing projects such as transit improvements, bike, PED improvements, you name it, those all get a free pass. Those are all VMT-neutral types of infrastructure projects. Even if you want to widen a local road or a local collector, that's also given a pass. But once you start getting above those higher functional classification of roadways, your, your local arterials and your arterials, if you want to widen those roadways, you will have to do a VMT analysis. And then last but not least, if a project is located in a low-generating, low-VMT-generating area, and those are development of screening maps, which I'll show you in a second. So geography, simply by geography, you can have the flexibility to give a proposed development a pass on SEQA. So, so this is an example. And so I'll just tell you right now, the, the dark-colored zones, those aren't VMT-efficient zones for a given land use. But if it's green or light green, then it's more efficient. So this is the countywide average, looking at home-based trips. So this would be for a residential development. And the metric is VMT per capita, or VMT per person. So this would be your countywide average. If you go to a regional average, much greener. And so what does that mean? That means the city has more flexibility to, and protection to screen a project from having to do a VMT analysis. And then if we go to the citywide average, a little bit less green. Looking at non-residential projects, so this is like an office development, per se, and, and the metric is now, instead of VMT per person, it's VMT per employee. Because it's the employees that really drive the amount of vehicle activity associated with the development. The white spaces are simply residential areas. So you're not going to see non-residential development in those. But, uh, again, if it's red or dark, it's, you're going to have to do a VMT analysis. But if it's green, you can be screened out from having to do that. And this is the countywide average, taking the entire county's characteristics and travel characteristics in mind. Here's the regional average, a bit greener. And then the citywide average, not much difference between city and regional for non-residential uses. So we, we provided the city all these examples, and, and they have to pick one. They have to pick a base, a baseline. Is it citywide, region-wide, or, or countywide? And they selected region-wide, and I concurred with that. Because you want to choose the same baseline average for both residential and non-residential developments. You don't want to be perceived as cherry-picking, like, we'll use citywide for this, but, you know, countywide for that. So they're choosing the same region-wide average for both residential and non-residential uses. And the regional average does provide a lot of flexibility to, to this council to screen. Now, you do have the discretion for any project, even if it appears in a green area. The city has the, um, the discretion to require a VMP analysis if it thinks it's warranted. So I just want to make that clear moving forward. So here's all the thresholds, and these are the actual numbers themselves. But, and we don't have, I won't repeat them. But again, for residential, it's 85% of the baseline average. So you have to do a bit better. So you have to be in one of those green areas. Same with office and business, where employment and commutes, commute driving is the primary VMT generator. Same with industrial and warehousing and manufacturing. As you can see, retail, retail doesn't really generate VMT. What it does, it just redistributes trips. Everybody has to shop. You just choose where you would choose to shop. And so new retail establishments can actually reduce trip lengths. And so the metric for retail is just net change in VMT. You don't have to be 85% below an average. It's just net change. That's the, the same for a hotel motel. It operates very similar to its retail. Recreation, regional medical and hospital, again, net change for those types of facilities. And regional public facilities as well, if they're regional. Mixed use, you're supposed to look at each use individually, not together. So that's kind of interesting, and that's per OPR's guidance. And then redevelopment fits within there. And you apply the, the relevant thresholds depending on the land use and the change of land use. So we pretty much have every type of development covered and have a, a threshold for. And so that gets into mitigation. So let's say there is an impact. What happens? There's three kinds of, of things that are happening on the mitigation side. There's, there's programmatic mitigation, and what does that mean? That's a mitigation measure that, like in the days of LOS, you would just add a turn lane and you were done, because you improved the operations at the intersection. Now, to reduce VMT, you actually have to have ongoing maintenance of effort to continue a, a programmatic way of reducing VMT of your employees or the residents of a, of a residential development. And how do you do that? You do it through travel demand management. So, um, SB CAG, you know, they have the, um, oh my gosh. What's it called? Traffic Solutions, who provide, I worked at SB CAG, so I should know that. But, and then subsidized transit passes for employees and so on and so forth. So that's what you think of in, in terms of programmatic. There is non-program, program, programmatic mitigation. And that's, you know, you can invest in active transportation infrastructure, bike paths, you know. If there's lack of connectivity, you, you fill those gaps in, and you can get credit for that, the VMT reduction associated with that. But mainly, the best non-programmatic mitigation is just to change the project. And that's really up to the developer's side, that they can modify their projects to be less VMT-impacting. And then last but not least, I always want to talk about this, and that's banks and exchanges. And really, to do this, you need a regional agency like SB CAG to, to do a countywide approach to this, where low-VMT projects can sell their VMT credits. So higher-VMT-generating projects can still move forward. But overall, countywide, you're, you're meeting the objectives of the, of SB 743. There's, there are several places in California that are actively examining this concept and are moving forward. But right now, nobody's actually implementing it. But I know there's a lot of interest in developing VMT banks and exchanges. And I think they're really good for, like, unincorporated county areas. Obviously, unincorporated county, if it's a rural county, any kind of development is going to create a, a VMT impact. So I think unincorporated counties would really like to have banks and exchanges to allow them to develop and, and just exchange the VMT credits. But we'll see. Keep your eye on that. And then, uh, I do want to mention that LOS is not going away. I haven't worked with one jurisdiction, city of Lompoc included, that has done away with their level of service standards. What has happened is that they, that you, cities have retained, and the city of Lompoc is doing the same. They're going to retain level of service as a general plan policy. And projects will still be subject to that, but it won't be a SEQA impact. It'll be handled through the entitlement process as a condition of approval. So delay in operations and are still very important to the city. Obviously, they don't want their citizens subject to, uh, bad congestion or congested hotspots that create issues, sometimes safety issues. So they're maintaining their LOS policies as a general plan policy. And none of this attracts your impact fees, which are based on trips and level of service still. So the staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution 74921, recommending that the city council adopt TA 2102, or provide other direction. We did meet with the Planning Commission in July, and they supported the recommendation. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And just clarification for the record, since you were working off the Planning Commission, the resolution before council is 644521.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a couple of questions for my clarity, please. You know, it seems like the state doesn't care about level of service. Now they care how far you drive, is what I'm gathering from this. These thresholds, who set those? Were those done by the screening criteria, or are they, who, who makes the threshold?
So the 85% below baseline average, that came from the state. But the baseline average was analyzed here based on the city of Lompoc's traffic characteristics, using the SB CAG model, and working with staff to select which baseline average actually supported what, you know, what they would like to see.
So, we're going to have a residential project built here, and 80% of the people are going to work in Santa Barbara. Since we're going regional, what vehicle miles traveled, does that affect the housing development?
If, if, if 80% of the residents are going to be working outside Lompoc, that VMT will be calculated, and it will go against and be measured against.
Okay, is there any way that the city could, at that time, use this VMT to bring the work here?
Yeah.
How do you do that?
Well, I mean, the project in of itself will have to be analyzed.
You kill a project with a VMT for people that have to commute. So it makes sense to bring the work here, so they don't have to commute. The state should have something that would allow us to expand and grow our industry here, then, correct?
That is correct.
So how do we get the state to do that?
I don't know.
Nobody does. We've been trying for years. Isn't it funny? The other thing I have a question here is, is, um, this is going to require a general plan amendment. No?
No.
Circulation element stays the same?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Farbuck, tonight, we are not asking you to amend the general plan. We're only asking you to amend the environmental review guidelines and the traffic study guidelines. We're integrating those thresholds that, that Jim mentioned tonight into the traffic study guidelines. It's a cut-and-paste job into those guidelines. So we don't, we do not need to amend.
Nothing in the general plan changes at this time, then?
Correct. And, and a matter of fact, as mentioned, the level of service standard will still remain in the general plan.
Thank you.
And, and just a quick question. When you were talking about the project, were you referring to the River Terrace project?
I'm sorry?
Were you referring to the River Terrace project?
No, I wasn't referring to anything. I was just talking about a couple of houses trying to get built. And if, all of a sudden, they're going to be, obviously, most of them are going to be commuter jobs now. We're, we're unable to, I was referring to no specific project, just since we're regional now.
Some of the older projects were, were, we will not need to do VMT because those projects were reviewed from an environmental standpoint such a long time ago that we don't have to worry about.
Right, everything after July 1st here on is what happened.
Yeah, of last year.
I just, I'd sure like to find a way that we could use this in our favor instead of, once again, putting a thumb on development.
Yeah, and, and I apologize that the wrong slide somehow got mixed up. So we are recommending, as Mayor said, Resolution 644521, to amend the guidelines and the traffic study as well, traffic study guidelines. So apologize for that error.
Any more questions of staff or the consultant before we go to public comment? Councilmember Ball?
I, I'm going to follow up on something Councilmember Starbuck said. And I'm catching up on this, so maybe you can enlighten me a little bit. So to the point of some housing development having VMT sort of cost applied to them, and that 80%, 85% commuting to Santa Barbara, how would that, how would anyone even know the makeup of those residents and where they would work? And how would that ever be determined prior to those people moving in and deciding to work in Lompoc, Santa Barbara? I'm kind of confused.
Right. Well, like I said, the, the VMT tool that we established for the city was informed by 80-plus model runs using the SB CAG model. And the SB CAG model is a countywide, it actually includes San Luis Obispo and Ventura County. So it's really looking at the three-county area. So the, the geographic screening, so those maps that showed green or red, in this case, it would be red because the model actually captured those longer trip lengths. So if we added non, or residential development, those trips were, were captured theoretically. Now, I'll, I'll say, this is an analytical process, and that's a big disadvantage moving forward with these new requirements, because level of service you can empirically measure, right? You can go out and count cars. You, you know, there was a, a, a well-established process for doing that. For VMT, you have to rely on models. And those models are continually updated. They're validated. The state of practice has been improving for the last 40 years, but they're still a model, and they're an abstraction. So.
I, I'm of the full understanding, this is probably something that we need to take care of in terms of just doing our job here. But it does make me question, and I need to learn a lot more, is this system, and again, the state does a lot of things and doesn't ask our opinion, doesn't ask our opinion, but does this place potentially, because you had a note up there in one of the slides, note, everything that exceeds these thresholds will face significant impact? So for me, it's like, are we putting another layer of complication on our attempts to grow our community? Is this putting a, is this making it harder in a place that's already pretty difficult?
And, and that's a great question. And, and one of the things that we did for the city was, well, how does this play out? I mean, what does this look like? So we actually went back and looked at six development projects that have already come and, and, you know, went through the old process. But we said, well, what would happen if they were applied to these thresholds? And across the board, projects that were shown to have impacts using level of service also showed impacts with VMT and vice versa. So it, it was very clear, at least in the six projects that we selected, and we selected a range, that the new thresholds are not more arduous in terms of SEQA impacts. I will say, VMT mitigation is a tougher ballgame than, than LOS impacts. So it's, I, I think the same number of projects that would have been shown to have impacts will still show impacts and vice versa. But those impacts are a little bit harder to get our head around, to how do you mitigate that VMT?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, one, one last thing. Since we're regional, is LAFCO involved in this?
No, no. And, and be careful, because we're, we just selected the regional average. We're just choosing that as a more appropriate baseline to look at the trip-making characteristics of what's occurring in the city of Lompoc. It doesn't mean you have a new layer of regional, um, yeah.
That's good.
Nobody's going to get more involved. SB CAG won't, LAFCO won't.
Well, there's a blessing. Thank you.
All right, any more questions? Thank you so very much. We will now open the floor for public comment on item number four. If you would like to speak on it, please come forward to the podium. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, computer, or radio.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. This sounds like more government overreach. Regional planning, central planning is more aligned with the communist. Regional planning, central planning is more aligned with the communist design. I noticed on the slide to locate near transit and affordable housing. Once again, that is the ideal communist city. Don't own a home, don't own a car, it's all trans, mass transportation and very condensed Anything that's, that's aligned with the ideal communist city and government overreach, I think you should oppose.
Did we have any written communication on this item?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no one call and no additional individuals rise, we will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Cordova?
And city manager or city attorney, this is a requirement, I guess, set in place. So if we chose not to do it, what would be the outcome?
If we chose not to adopt these thresholds and, and VMT analysis, then we would be in violation of state law. We have some discretion, I believe, on what thresholds to adopt, but we have to do something to implement the VMT, the new VMT laws.
Right. Thank you.
Seeing no one else ask a question or make a motion, I will go ahead and recommend that we adopt Resolution number sixty-four forty-five twenty-one and staff recommendations. And I need a second.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Any questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. All right, item number five. Decision and direction regarding the appeal by the Lompoc Artificial Kidney Center LLC of Waste Discharge Permit I-0013 and Utility Director's Ruling on Request for Reconsideration in accordance with the Lompoc Municipal Code Sections 1.32010 and 13.16.130, adoption of Resolution number sixty-three ninety-nine parentheses twenty-one. And our utility director, Charles Berry, is back.
Yes, good evening, Honorable, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, CJ Berry, utility director. Before we begin, if I could just tend to a couple of housekeeping items, I would like to state that the appellant is entitled to due process. So with respect to that matter, the city attorney tonight is representing the city council and not staff. Secondly, I would like to thank Dr. Sean in the audience here. He is our wastewater plant manager, Julie Moore, our resident chemist and laboratory supervisor, and Doran Mars, our wastewater collection supervisor. And I have them here to also be available to answer any questions that may come up. So with that, I do have some prepared remarks. There's a lot here, so I'll just beg your patience with me as I work through this. And if something comes up, please do feel free to interrupt me along the way. So moving forward for you tonight, for consideration is the consolidated appeal for the Lompoc Artificial Kidney Center. This appeal is a result of an initial hearing that took, took place September 3, 2019 and has since been continued multiple times. At the September 2019 hearing, the kidney center and council agreed to stay any enforcement action against the kidney center for being in violation of the discharge permit. However, the stay of enforcement does not preclude nor absolve the kidney center from compliance. Subsequent to September 2019 council meeting, the kidney center has been issued two notices of violation, which are attached in a record as part of the staff report. Since that time, there has been agreement by the kidney center and the city to consolidate appeals and continue the hearing to today's date, which is also not, notated in the staff report. As a brief summary, discharge permit I-0013 was issued with an effective date of May 7, 2019. Since that time, the kidney center has not denied it is not in compliance. And an appeal does not preclude compliance during the appeal period. However, staff have worked in earnest and extended substantial effort in terms of time and financial resources to reach resolution and help the kidney center come into compliance. Unfortunately, to date, these efforts have yielded minimal progress. Although the kidney center appears to have committed to no longer using a water softener, several outstanding permit requirements remain. That said, I do want to acknowledge the important work the kidney center does in the community and in the city. But even with that laudable work, the kidney center has a responsibility to the city and the community, which is to comply fully with all federal, state, and local laws which are in place to ensure the community has a safe water supply. As a reminder, the city is under an administrative order on consent with the federal EPA to bring it into compliance with its discharge permit. Additionally, the city is in the midst of extremely difficult negotiations on a new discharge permit that will tighten the limits on pollutants and constituents, potentially placing substantial new unfunded mandates upon the city and its ratepayers. Further, under the current sewer use ordinance, the kidney center, kidney center is categorically a significant industrial user. In addition, at the regular council meeting on August 3rd, the council approved changes to sewer use ordinance, the summary of which has been approved by the federal EPA pursuant to the AOC on record. And these updates will further perfect the fact that the kidney center is indeed a significant industrial user. Although the staff report is voluminous, it is a prime example of the extensive efforts the city and its staff have undertaken to assist the kidney center, which again has yielded minimal progress to date. Based upon the information contained within the staff report, in addition to the before mentioned comments in my opening remarks, staff recommendation that council adopt Resolution 693321 denying the appeal and upholding the director's decision. With that, staff is available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, this one was a hard one to chew through, this staff report. I'm going to tell you about it, right off the bat, I'm, you know, once again, it seems like it's regulation over people and so I'm not happy with all of that, you know, we're in fear of the EPA and the state water board, ooh ah. One of the things that I, I notice is not in here is the water we bring into the city, the total dissolved solids, the salinity level, all of this, none of this is brought in, nor is it controlled by the state water board. What we pull up out of the ground, the state doesn't care. But they care about what we discharge. So all of a sudden, we get the bottom dump out of Kachuma, our salinity goes up, we have to eat that. Then we have to process it, and then we get fined on the discharge end of it. There's something wrong with the whole cycle where you say, safe water supply here. Yeah, well, the safe water supply should start when they dump and open the gates up at Kachuma and Bradbury sends us down sediment. This is where there's a two-face one-eighty happening here. I really am going to disagree with the fact that human waste is industrial waste. This statement's been made here, you just made it. All of a sudden, you know, if we have dialysis at home, it's okay, but we go to a kidney center, now it's become an industrial process. What if a doctor, what is he doing in his office? If, if human waste is an industrial waste, you'd love my bathroom, I tell you, this is not the way it should be termed. So what is the meaning here? How do we make human waste industrial waste because they serve so many people? Or?
Well, I, I think the delineation there, Councilmember Starbuck, is the fact that it's a commercial operation as opposed to you engaging in activity at your personal residence for your own use.
So if these doctors went to your home and did dialysis, and they did it, there's forty people go to the kidney center, but you do it at forty separate residences, there's a huge difference?
Yeah.
No, there isn't. There's forty individual dialysis happening, or there's forty in one spot that's controlled.
Sure. I, I understand your point and I can appreciate the frustration. The semantics are quite interesting, but at the end of the day, the City of Lompoc does not have unilateral authority to determine what is and is not industrial waste.
So why are we involved in the fight? Because it's our wastewater plant?
That's correct.
It's regional. Why don't we let the state, regional water board operate it then? It's easy for them to sit and tell us what we can do and not do, but they don't live here.
I, I understand your frustration, I do.
So no matter what, well then, there's no reason if this should be in front of us. Why are we hearing an appeal that we have no control over? If we vote, no, we're going to uphold for the kidney center. We want dialysis to happen for our citizens in one spot where they can be watched.
Sure.
All of a sudden, we're the bad guys again?
Yeah, and to that point.
Why is it here? I, I mean, I don't understand what, what the appeal is if we can't do it because it's against our regs and state water board and EPA and everybody else. I, I mean, do you just, are we the fall-on guys?
So to that point, and I will ask a city attorney to keep me honest on this, but council does have the authority to direct staff to go a different direction. I, I believe that is an accurate statement, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, well, we're going to be in the same situation we were months ago when we denied this and we said, no, let the kidney center continue to operate. So we say, deny, you know, we're going to overturn, we're going to support the appeal of the kidney center, but now we're in violation.
That is correct.
So why are we even looking at it?
Yeah, if I could, if I could chime in here. The, the purpose of the appeal is so that the council can decide whether the staff is correctly applying our ordinance rules and the state regulations that are imposed upon us. So staff applies our ordinance and state regulations, and then if the kidney center disagrees with the way that staff is applying them or interpreting them, then the kidney center can appeal to the council. And the council is the decider to figure out who's right.
Well, I mean, you're the attorney, you know the legalities. Mr. Berry is, knows far more about sewer than I do. It's, you know, I mean, it's for the council, it's just a lose and a lose.
Councilmember Cordova?
So as ugly as it is of a situation for this council to review the information and have to make whatever consideration concessions or decisions need to be made, the reality is, is that the, the applicant, or, or in this case, the kidney center, has the right to have, to go to the next step, and that's what brings them before this council. So unfortunately, you know, we're put in that predicament and it's ugly and I hate it. However, can we talk a little bit about, I went back and I pulled my agenda packets from the September 3rd, 2019 date and whatnot and prior notes that I had. Can we talk a little bit about what does it take to bring the kidney center to compliance? Because we really are in a tough situation. We get the human factor and I understand the, I guess, the need in the community, but at the same time, how can we resolve this without having to pit each other against each other and make that decision? Because I know we talked about a potential resolution in the past, and I know that there was even an offer from the city at that time to assist in bringing them into compliance. Can we talk about that? Is that still on the table? And why can't the kidney center consider that?
Well, to answer that, Councilmember Cordova, I would have to defer to the kidney center. But more pointedly to your question, can they get into compliance? Yes, they can. The three outstanding criteria to be in compliance with their discharge permit is the installation of a representative sample point, a flow meter, and a conductivity meter. That is the criteria, the remaining criteria to bring them into compliance, presuming there is no longer use of the water softener.
Correct. And so are we presuming, have we been told, and before I ask any questions or we go to any questions to the kidney center, I really want to get kind of staff to, to answer these questions. Do we have verification that they have ceased using the?
I, I have received a picture from their council, which does appear that they have capped off their water softener. We have not done a visual inspection, but I trust that the picture they sent is indeed accurate.
Okay. And then to incorporate the other items that are left, the three items that you just mentioned, is there a major cost associated to that? Is that why we're not seeing them come into compliance?
So with all due respect, Councilmember Cordova, I, I think the city sensitivity to cost might be a little bit different.
No, 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 yeah, but what I want to know is, do we have an estimated cost, I guess, of what that would, that, what that would be?
You know, let me defer to staff on this. I, I believe at one point in time, staff did pursue getting an estimate to install a representative sample point. Come up here, Doran. Again, Doran Mars.
And I think, I, I really thank you guys because this has been going on for a while, and I think getting some of those questions answered and answered and resurrecting some of those points, I think is important for the council as well as for the public to understand that we've been trying to bring them to compliance for a long time, and I don't want it to just become an issue of this council is being insensitive to the life of some of our residents. So that's why I want to ask these questions.
Sure, that, that's the farthest thing, farthest thing that we want to get back into at all. We did look into a local contractor and they did give us a quote of a sample station. It's a standard manhole, and it was at the tune of, I can't, seventy-five hundred dollars, maybe something like that.
And for further clarification, Doran, can, can you speak to what you've seen in terms of cost for flow and conductivity meters, just so we can get a complete picture for the council?
I haven't, I haven't looked into the meter side of it. I don't know if Sean or Julie, I don't know if we've gotten that far into that because that would be on the kidney center itself.
Okay.
I think one of the things we looked at back in 2019 was when previous director was here was offering the kidney center because they were still wanting to keep their system, such as the, the water softener or whatever that type of system is. At that point, they did not want to give that up, so we were looking at trying to do a, a low-interest type of loan for five years, and they did not want to do it at that point. And the staff at that point, they're no longer here. That person had found something, and I'm trying to remember just off memory, it was in the realm of eighty-five to ninety-five thousand dollars. I don't know if it would have fit what they wanted, but that was what other kidney centers had been using for the saline, you know, the softener piece. So that might be, you know, one of the things that we had looked at in the past. Now, seeing what our utility director's saying is it's less than a big system, it's just actually sampling and some meters.
Right, right. And so kind of when we're looking at what's left, if they've ceased use of the water softening system and what we have left is these three components, I'm just wondering why the holdup? And maybe that, that should be asked of, of the kidney center.
Sorry to interrupt. I think that it can be asked to the kidney center, but I think also as information from staff, I think one of the directions where your line of questioning is going is to get some information out there as to what has the city done to try to work with the kidney center to, to help them along in getting to compliance, telling them what they need to do and offering assistance. And I know that I personally followed the council direction in 2019 to try to submit to the regulatory agencies some amendments to our ordinance. And we did that and those were rejected. We did attempt to do that. Even subsequent to that, I know that staff has been working with the kidney center and their attorney. Some of the emails are in the packet for the last several months to try to help them understand what's necessary to come into compliance. And I don't know if you want to quickly go over that process, CJ, and then we can ask the kidney center as well to get their take on it. I'm sure they're going to want to.
Sure, thank you. Yes, there has been, there has been on not less than three occasions, email exchanges and a few phone calls between the kidney center council, myself, and city council. Repeatedly, staff has been very clear about what is necessary to come into compliance with the discharge permit. And we, we, as you can see by the, the thickness of the staff report you have in there, it contains many, many of the communications that have been had. So it, it really is our desire. I, I know it feels like we're, we're pitting city against business right now, and, and that's not the case at all. It's just our desire to help them come into compliance. And, and we have, quite frankly, in my And we have, quite frankly, in my opinion, staff has bent over backwards to try and do this, and we want to continue to be supportive of that. We, I completely understand, and the utility department understands, and the city understands the important need of this operation and the community, and we want to be supportive of that. However, as the utility director, my obligation is to ensure that we are in compliance with the regulatory agencies, and right now, we potentially are not, and that condition could be compounded very quickly into the future.
Right. And for clarification, too, I'm not saying that staff is pitting, you know, the council against the Kidney Center. I think the situation itself is where we're at. And I do believe, because I have been part of the discussions, at least since 2019, and I know the progression of everything that has happened and what we've tried to do, I also do know and understand that unfortunately, right now, where we're at with the EPA, if we were to rule in favor of the Kidney Center and give them the concession to say they don't have to comply, what does that do, City Attorney?
I know from conversations with the EPA that this is high on their radar. And the EPA is aware of the delay that has existed on this item and the city's lack of enforcement against the Kidney Center while this delay has been occurring, while we have been attempting to get the Kidney Center and help the Kidney Center to come into compliance. If we were to delay that any longer, it could and likely would result in enforcement action by EPA against the city for failing to enforce our sewer use ordinance.
Okay. And in denying the appeal, do we have any way of anticipating what the EPA would rule on? For them, it would, they would basically be required to comply, correct?
That's right. And you might have read in the staff report that the EPA is already, is also investigating or potentially initiating enforcement against the Kidney Center directly. So, denying the appeal would require the Kidney Center to comply just as the EPA is separately attempting to get the Kidney Center to comply.
Correct. And I think those facts needed to be stated, because even if the council decides tonight that we are going to go in favor of the Kidney Center, because we understand the need in the community, and we understand the services that they provide, please understand that the city council has already, in a way, ruled in favor of the Dialysis Center by having sent the letter to the EPA and having tried to make the changes to our municipal code and to say, "This is what we want to change," to accommodate them, and they rejected that formally and said, "If you do not come into compliance, then you will also have a slew of other items that you will be dealing with, and we are also on our own dealing with the Kidney Center directly." I just needed to make that point and remind everyone in this room and anybody watching that this is a hard decision, but please understand, there is so much backdrop to this.
Yeah, and that's all correct, everything that you said.
So, before we go to the appellant, I think we should get all the questions we possibly can think of to staff while we have them, and then allow the appellant to reply. So, Councilmember Ball.
Thank you. I definitely have just a couple of quick questions, and definitely a few questions for those that are appealing. First off, just in layman's terms, let's just talk about a Kidney Center in a vacuum in Lompoc or in Los Angeles or in any place else. Are the requirements that Lompoc is asking this group to come into compliance with, is that unusual? Are we adding something specific in Lompoc? Or is this just, we're doing the same thing that a place in Los Angeles or a place that didn't dump into the ocean is still required to follow these same state and EPA rules? So, a fair question?
Sure. To that point, discharge permits vary based on location and what the situation is. Because we do dump into a freshwater creek, we do have very tight limitations on what we do. And anything that could adversely affect the receiving waters, which is where our outflow flows to, is very tightly regulated. Unlike other municipalities where they may dump half a mile or a mile out to the ocean, they have a lot more latitude.
Thank you. And let's see, I just wanted to go over the SIU stuff, because in here in the staff report, it specifically said that the difference between the commercial and the residential is that to qualify for being, you know, a significant industrial user, you're discharging 25,000 gallons per day or more of processed wastewater. Does that, does that apply to this group?
That does not apply to this group. However, the other caveats identified within the SIU as well as the Class II user do apply.
Okay. Thank you. I definitely have a few more questions down the road.
Mr. Berry, do any other entities in our community require the same sort of permits and corrective measures?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I'm happy to research that with staff and provide that information back to council. But I can tell you, the conditions set forth are unique to the environmental conditions we have here. Now, whether or not those are emulated in other locations, I don't know that off the top of my head.
No, I meant within our community, so like the pool or other businesses. Who else?
I apologize.
Not who exactly, but do we have other entities within the city limits that are required to follow these permitting demands and oversight and enforcement?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, this isn't unique? This is just a part of enforcement of our own rules?
That is correct.
That the state and the federal government insist we enforce?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ball.
I'll be, I just want to, I meant to mention this earlier. I just want to, you know, if I don't speak for you up here, please correct me, but I don't think there's anyone in this room, staff or in the council, that thinks that this is an issue between, should we keep a Kidney Center here for our citizens, or should we let it go? That's never been the question. That is not the question at all. We need that service, but for that service to sustain itself within our community, it has to be in compliance with the rules that are above us. And sometimes those are ones that we do not like. So, I just want to put that out there. My, not that this qualifies me, I don't have diabetes or don't deal with that, but it hit a friend of mine. He's in his late 40s, he just turned 50, and healthy as all anyone could determine, and went to the doctor, and something wasn't just right. And all of a sudden, he's a diabetes patient. So, this is a real deal affecting people that we all know. This is a critical need in our community. But we need to be very specific. We're not here making a decision on should Lompoc provide service to kidney patients and provide dialysis or not. It's not that issue at all. This is about us as a city avoiding worst-case scenarios. For example, in the staff report, it says, "If the water board fines the city in violation of the city's NPDES permit, then fines of up to $6,000 per occurrence per day can be imposed against the city or against individual users." That's scary enough. The next sentence starts, "There could also be fines from the EPA as well as litigation from private parties alleging the city's noncompliance." So, I have a very rough question. I don't think you'd be able to answer it specifically, but I'd love for you to take a stab at it. Worst-case scenario, what are we looking at if we had these fines actually imposed upon us?
In terms of monetary value?
Sure.
I would really be remiss to answer that, because there's so many qualifiers that go along with it. Mitigation, it was, or was it basically malfeasance? What was the cause of the exceedance? But I think it is very safe to say, there are outside entities that are very closely watching this city, and that is outside entities far and apart from the regulatory authorities.
And we would have to defend ourselves and our choices against any and all of those entities potentially.
That is correct.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. Vega, I did not see your light. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Berry, we have a hard decision here, because we have a, it is a unique business, so I don't go along with that we're not unique or it is unique. It is unique. It is the only Kidney Center here in Lompoc. It is the only medical facility here, because if it was Lompoc Hospital, it would be a different story. So, I want to make sure that we make decisions that are also considerate of the people utilizing this thing, this center. Tonight's not the end game here, you know? There's an appeal here, but what I would like us to do is actually extend the appeal, not deny it, and allow the city one more time to try and come and find a resolution with the Kidney Center. We have a new utility director. Before, when it came back, we had a different utility director, different decision makers. We may now, now that EPA has been involved, so the fear factor that EPA is there and everybody needs to be scared and whatever, I get it. But also, the permit process through wastewater, as you mentioned, that you're applying for a new permit for wastewater, Mr. Berry, is that correct?
The permit has been applied for, and negotiations with the state water board are extremely difficult right now and ongoing.
Yeah. And I understand the pressure you guys are up against with EPA now that they're involved. But at the same, on the same breath here, the permit that you applied for, the parameters from which, which are a little different here than the parameters we're expecting from the Kidney Center. But from my understanding, the wastewater permit is based on numbers that wastewater submits on their own for permits. It's not a standard that's set in stone that you're required to meet. I think what's happening here is your permit that you're applying for, the standards from which you apply the permit to are numbers that wastewater put together to hopefully be in compliance with EPA. And maybe you could correct me if I'm mistaken.
Sure. So, there's two mutual issues here. First and foremost, the matter before you tonight is not a discussion on the discharge permit, rather, it's asking for your consideration on the appeal. The point is, there is a nexus there. Anything that is done upstream, in this case, the waste stream of the Kidney Center, does have an impact on our wastewater plant.
And I got you, sir, and I'm not trying to mix it up, but you know, the swimming pool was mentioned, and you mentioned the permit. I do know that the backwash and the dumping of the swimming pool and the timing of everything and the testing of wastewater is important also for the salt content. So, I do understand that part about wastewater as far as testing. It has nothing to do with the Kidney Center, but I would like the council for us to extend the appeal and allow the city to work one more time with the Kidney Center now that we're at this point. Today's not the end game. I believe the Kidney Center wants to be in compliance. They're not going to go anywhere, but we have to take care of the patients that they service. So, I would like us to, again, allow us to work one more time with the city. We have the city attorney, everyone has the fear factor of the EPA. That's fine. As long as they see us working with them, which I think is our end goal, I think that would be, that would work for everyone. The fact that we make a different decision tonight, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we're here for. I think we need to make the moral decision to help the Kidney Center and the patients who are at the end, some of them are at the end of their life. It's required. It's necessary, regardless if you call this a commercial or industrial waste.
Mayor and council, I want to remind and caution the council that we haven't opened the public hearing yet. So, at this time, it should just be questions to staff, and the council can start deliberations after we've heard from the applicant and from the public.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Real quick here, on page nine, it says, "By regulating the facility as a Class I user, particularly in light of the fact that the facility has already derived considerable economic benefit from not being properly evaluated or regulated since it began operation in 1997." They've been in operation almost for about 26 years here. All of a sudden, it lists in here an anonymous complaint from somebody. Now, we're wrapped around the axle here. Our discharge permit has been good up until the anonymous complaint, basically. We were never able to determine high salinity. So, something is focusing on the Kidney Center. We didn't find any issues until the anonymous complaint that's listed in the staff report came in. They've been there since '97. They've been there through the whole sewer, regional plant change, upgrade, the whole thing. So, what's the, what brought this all in? An anonymous complaint is what started this whole thing, and then we started narrowing in on it, because obviously, they were fined until two years ago.
Yeah, I can't pinpoint to what exactly drove that anonymous complaint, but without regard to whether we know about it or don't know about it, the fact remains, we do know about it today.
Yeah, but we'd never had any high salinity. We never had an issue with it. Our plant was within parameters. And now, all of a sudden, we're the bad boys of the county, we're state water board. You know, I don't get this.
So, I don't want to wade into other-
Well, wait until deliberations.
Yeah, I think, thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, so I'm reminded that we should keep this to questions. So, you know, in response to Councilmember Vega's desire to perhaps talk about pushing this off a little bit, how should I ask this question? Is this two pages of the sequence of the city working with this group to try to figure this out? I mean, this started in September 2018. Do you want to go over some of this sequence and explain a little bit to me that, let's just be real about it, this has been an ongoing process for three-ish years? Almost three years? Coming up on three?
Come, yes, this will be coming up on three years. That is correct.
And there's been give and take, efforts from the city, working in good faith, trying to figure this out since September of 2018?
Just a point of clarification, Councilmember Ball, it was September of 2019.
My apologies.
Well, but actually, the initial notice of violation was September 2018. So, it has been-
Do I stand corrected? Thank you.
I have one more question for you. If the state, if we're, let's say this, in 2020, in some, in some context, the state has a rule, whatever the rules, and the city in 2020 is in compliance. In 2021, the state changes the rules, and the city's out of compliance. Can we just stay that way, or do we have to come into compliance?
The city is obliged to come into full compliance with all regulatory agencies.
Thank you.
We do not have the ability to debate that.
All right. Before I invite the appellant up, any more questions for staff? Seeing none, we invite the appellant to come to the podium and provide information and take questions from council.
In apologies, but before we get started, we do need to wait till all the council members are present, because it's a public hearing.
Thank you all for your patience while we wait for our council to return to full presence. The floor is now yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Samir Abdonor, and I represent the Lompoc Artificial Kidney Center. I had some prepared remarks that I was going to make, but I think my time is better spent addressing some of the concerns and questions you've raised and the discussion with Mr. Berry. I want to assure you, the Kidney Center is not opposed to working with the city, to being regulated in a manner that ensures that the city's water supply is safe and compliant. But this appeal is not about- But this appeal is not about the city's issues with the regional board or the city's issues with the EPA. This appeal is about a permit that was issued to the kidney center that should never have been issued and that should be invalidated. The conversation that you had with Mr. Berry went back three years ago, Mr., Councilmember Ball, you asked some questions about how long this has been going on, and Councilmember Starbuck, you did too. And how this started three years ago with anonymous complaint about the water softener. And from that anonymous complaint, there was an inspection done at the kidney center. One sample was taken at the discharge pipe at the end of where the water softener system is hooked up, and it found elevated levels of sodium and chloride. And from that complaint, and the, and the sample, and the single sample, the permit was issued and the enforcement action was undertaken. And then, you're well aware of the record that's gone on over the last three years, the two council hearings in September and November of 2019, where you directed the city attorney to submit proposed amendments to EPA. I want to talk about those as well. But the basis for the issuance of the permit was not valid then, it is not valid now. Number one, as Mr. Berry acknowledged, the water softener is gone. The photo that you have, I think it's attachment 24, shows that it's been capped. I was there before this meeting, it's gone, it's unhooked. I can show you a picture, you can come by and see it whenever you like, it's not there. So that was one of the bases for issuance of the permit. The permit is issued to the kidney center as a Class 1 significant industrial user. The kidney center is neither of those things. A Class 1 user discharges 10,000 gallons a day on average. The kidney center has never discharged 10,000 gallons a day. Presently, the kidney center discharge, actually, does not discharge, excuse me, the kidney center uses less than 8,000 gallons a day. Its discharge is something less than that. I think at the time that the permit was issued, staff may have been aware that the kidney center was considering an expansion of the facility. Now, had that expansion gone through, it's possible that that 10,000 gallon a day threshold would have been met, but the expansion never went through, it's not happening. And in fact, the kidney center now treats fewer patients in the center itself, in the facility, than it did a year ago. And that's because increasingly, it's working to move those patients who can to do home dialysis, which is an issue you raised, Councilmember Starbuck. What's the difference between wastewater at home, wastewater at the kidney center? Now, we appreciate the council and the staff's efforts to convince the EPA to understand that dialysate wastewater should not be considered industrial waste. We understand the EPA rejected that proposed amendment, we're ready to move on from that. That was one of the issues that came before you two years ago, that water softener was the other issue. But that's not the end of the story. That's not the only reason that, that this permit is not valid. As I mentioned, the kidney center is not properly characterized as a Class 1 user. It's also not properly characterized as a significant industrial user. Certainly, it doesn't meet the 25,000 gallon a day threshold, but it doesn't meet any of the other thresholds either. And in fact, the main one that I think Mr. Berry and staff consider when, when they're thinking about, you know, is this a significant industrial user, is, does it have a reasonable, reasonable potential to have an adverse impact on the wastewater treatment plan? We know the answer is no. As you noted, Councilmember Starbuck, it's been operating for almost 25 years in this community, and it sends less than one-half of 1% of the city's water to the treatment plan. And in all of its operations, the kidney center has never caused an interference or passed through another adverse impact to the treatment plan. So it can't be a significant industrial user. I think that's why, two years ago, you directed the city attorney to submit a proposed amendment to EPA to limit the utility director's discretion, that the utility director could not issue a discharge permit to an industrial user under a 25,000 gallon a day threshold. Now, the staff report says that EPA rejected that proposed amendment. That's not the whole story. In fact, the attachment you have, I believe it's attachment 13, that's the March 2nd letter from EPA to Mr. Berry. And on page two of that letter, item four, it states that the EPA disapproves the proposed change to limit the director's discretion, but it goes on to stay, say, "There is not enough detail regarding how the director's discretion will be limited. Please provide additional clarifying details or remove the proposed changes." At the bottom of the letter, it asks for a resubmital within 60 days. That was the second time the EPA asked for more detail about that specific proposed amendment. The other time was in January of 2021. That letter is not in your materials, but it's a January 26th letter. Same thing, they couldn't approve that amendment, they needed more detail. I don't know whether that additional detail has been submitted or not. I know that on the date of this March 2nd letter, that's the date that city staff issued the notice of violation to the kidney center. Now, I have to tell you, the kidney center was quite surprised to receive that notice of violation. Because I don't know if you remember, thankfully, we've got YouTube videos, but I've gone and looked at both of them. On the September 3rd, 2019 meeting, the city council was prepared to move forward with a motion, I think it was your motion, Councilmember Vega, that the appeal, that the kidney center's appeal be upheld. The city attorney requested a brief break to talk with staff, and came back after the break and proposed the stay of the appeal. And after he made that, that proposal, he requested that kidney center council, at the time it was Ian Guthrie, agree to that stay, agree to continuing the appeal. And Mr. Guthrie said, quote, "We believe the board could go ahead and make the ruling tonight because the board has the power to interpret the statute, but having talked to city council, we're willing to agree to the stay to allow city council to amend the ordinance, and there's a little less friction going forward. So we're willing to go forward with the stay as long as there's no permit enforcement pending either the amendment or the return of the appeal." And the response from the city attorney was, "I'm certain that that's the intent." So for two years, the kidney center had operated under this understanding that it would agree to stay the appeal, which, which council was prepared to rule on, in return for the permit not being enforced against it. And on March 2nd, it got a notice of violation, but that it hadn't been in compliance with the permit. Now, you heard Mr. Berry talk about all of the efforts that staff have made, I think he characterized it bending over backwards, to help the kidney center come into compliance. But come into compliance with what? We have challenged the appeal, the permit, excuse me, from day one. We had an assurance from the city attorney that the permit would not be enforced pending the appeal. So come into compliance with what? All of these elements of the permit that, that Mr. Berry went through, the representative sampling point, the flow meter, the conductivity meter, we talked to several consultants to get bids on those. Nothing under tens of thousands of dollars, okay, up to over $100,000. This is the first time I heard somebody could do it for $7,500, and we asked. We asked city staff, "Can you help us find a consultant to help us with this?" And they refused. The connect, the flow meter, conductivity meter, I asked city staff, "Who else in the city has to have that?" I don't know the identities, but there are five operators in the cities that have to install a flow meter on, and a conductivity meter. Whether this is an unusual ask for a kidney center, Councilmember Ball, absolutely. The chief water technician at the Lompoc Kidney Center has asked every contact he knows in a similar role at other kidney centers, not a single one is required to comply with a permit like this. I appreciate, we appreciate how difficult this is for you. You don't want to expose the city to any issues with state agencies or federal agencies, but it should not come on the backs of the kidney center patients who are choosing every day to continue living, to continue spending another day with their families. If the city wants to have a conversation with the kidney center, without the specter of this permit and enforcement hanging out over its head, we will happily do that. We will happily work with the city to figure out a way how we can come in compliance while we continue to operate and serve the needs of this community. The kidney center is not just the only medical facility in Lompoc, it is a five-star rated medical facility. That's a rating that 10% of medical facilities nationwide get. Cottage Hospital in Santa Barbara is not a five-star rated facility, but the Lompoc Kidney Center is. So I, I want to be clear here, and I hope I was clear at the beginning. The issue that you're deciding tonight is not whether what the kidney center does is forcing the city to be in violation of some regulation. There's no evidence that what the kidney center does is actually forcing the city into any sort of violation or compliance. With respect to EPA, yes, the EPA does have an investigation enforcement action directly with the kidney center. And I've talked to enforcement council at EPA repeatedly. We actually have had very constructive conversations. I can't get into the details of those because they're settlement discussions to resolve that investigation, but I assure you, they are not as onerous as the permit requirements that have been imposed here. And again, a permit issued to a Class 1 user and a significant industrial user, which is not what the kidney center is, a permit issued based on a water softener complaint, which has been resolved now, and a single sample from three years ago. So your suggestion, Councilmember Vega, that this is not the end of the road, I agree with that. But we respectfully request not that this appeal get stayed again, so that we can go back and talk more with the city. As long as the permit's hanging over our head, those talks have kind of shown that they've reached the end of where they're going to go. We would ask that you grant the appeal, invalidate the permit, city can come back to us clean slate, and we can work something out. That's what we're here to talk about tonight. I'll take any questions you have.
Councilmember Cordova.
Who, who classifies the kidney center? Is it city attorney, is it the city of Lompoc municipal code that's classifying them, or is this a classification that we automatically adopt from, from the EPA, and they fall into that classification?
You can classify them as the Class 1 user or the Class 2 user, whether they need a permit.
Right.
We have definitions in our code of what a Class 1 user is and Class 2 user, or a significant industrial user. And my understanding is, this was, this, the kidney center was determined to be a significant industrial user or Class 2 user by falling under the provision in those definitions that allows the utility director to determine that they are a use that will have a significant impact on the wastewater system, and that therefore they require a, a permit. So I believe, oh, I believe that is the cubby hole, that in the definition that we're using to classify them as someone who needs a permit, is that it's someone in the utility director's discretion that needs to have a permit?
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you. So the municipal code, the definition of significant industrial user, one of four things. A, it's subject to federal categorical, categorical pretreatment standards. Nobody's arguing that applies to the kidney center. B, it discharges 25,000 gallons a day or more of processed wastewater. No. C, it contributes a processed waste stream which makes up 5% or more of the average dry weather hydraulic organic, or organic loading capacity of the treatment plan? No, it's less than half of 1%. D, this is that catch-all, has a reasonable potential, in the opinion of the director, to adversely affect the wastewater treatment plan, for example, cause interference, pass through, or endangerment to employees of the wastewater system. What is the reasonable basis for that determination from the director? In 25 years, that has never happened. We are talking about less than half of a percent of the water going to the treatment plant. What is the reasonable basis for finding that the kidney center is a SIU under element D of that definition?
So, Councilmember Cordova, I, I do not want to get into a back and forth argument because that's not the purpose of a public hearing, so council can ask their questions to the kidney center, and then we can take comment from the rest of the public, and then if you have questions for staff afterwards, during your deliberations, then you can ask those. I would just note that that's the significant industrial user definition. There's also a Class 2 user definition that's on page three of the staff report as well.
And my response to that is that the permit is not a Class 2 user permit, it's a Class 1 user permit.
So I'm a little confused, so let's get into this a little bit. What did the EPA reject on March 2nd of this year?
So that's...
Why was that necessary for us to try to make an adjustment?
Sure, so that's at attachment 13. So in November, November 5th, I think, 2019, the council hearing that took place then, city council directed the city attorney to, to submit proposed amendments to the municipal code that needed to be approved, reviewed and approved by EPA. One of those amendments was to define dialysis waste outside of the definition of industrial waste. That was outright rejected. That's no longer an issue, that's been resolved, unfortunately not in the kidney center's favor. The other main proposed amendment was to revise the municipal code, to change the director's discretion, to require a permit to only users that discharge wastewater into the treatment system in excess of 25,000 gallons per day. That was submitted. The EPA has not approved that amendment, but on page two of the March 2nd letter, they did not categorically reject it. They asked for more detail about that amendment, and I just don't know that that detail has been submitted.
Fair enough. Only question for you. Let's, let's get into the reality of life right now. Should the kidney, should we decide against the appeal? What is the on-the-ground impacts and ramifications at this kidney center? Meaning, what is the direct impact upon patients? Will they receive less treatment?
So...
Inefficient treatment? How will that work?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't think they're going to receive a lower quality of treatment because the kidney center works as hard as humanly possible to give them the best care that they can. But when diverting tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands, to do these installations that are typically contemplated for a much larger facility and a much higher volume discharger, and then complying with the requirements of the permit, ongoing monitoring, ongoing reporting obligations beyond just the installation of that equipment, then those are fewer sources to be able to treat patients. So, I mean, you know, I, I think it's fair to say that the number of patients they can treat will likely go down.
So that's interesting, because you mentioned that there's, you said you, the group has done quite a bit of asking consultants, trying to get bids and quotes and stuff, but you're here listing that there's a range of potential costs between tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Which is it? Is it somewhere in the middle? Could it be hundreds of thousands of dollars? If so, where does that cost come from?
So, in my personal conversations with two separate, two separate consultants, neither of which, mind you, have actual specific experience dealing with kidney centers, and we have not found one that does, and we have not heard from city staff that they know of one that does. But putting that aside, one, in each instance... But putting that aside, one, in each instance, they wanted over $10,000 to come to the facility and essentially do an observation and do a scoping and planning type of scope of work to then figure out what the work was going to be to put in the sampling point, to put in the flow meter. And from there, the best they could do was ballpark it. And the first one I talked to, he said, you know, if it's easy, if the installation is easy, you know, maybe you get it in for 30, 40, but if it's hard, it could, that's where it got up to close to $100,000. The other one looked like it was going to be in the, you know, mid-10s, 40, 50 range.
Thank you. Is this group, which is doing a lot of good work here, helping patients, is this a nonprofit group or is this a for-profit group?
I believe it's a for-profit entity.
So as I'm, and again, this isn't saying it's good or bad, but I am hesitant because I understand there's two sides to this, but the city has made some efforts to try, I mean, would you deny that they offered and tried to figure out at least a loan or, they've had the conversations of trying to bring, we could argue about who's in compliance or not, but there has been some discussion to bring this, to bring this current.
So I would agree that going, up until the two hearings that took place in the fall of 2019, there seemed to be a lot of cooperation and collaboration about trying to find a solution. But I don't think that's been the case since then.
What changed, if you don't mind articulating a little bit?
Sure. So I came into this shortly after the March notice of violation was issued, and the director of the kidney center, Dr. Kamal, Dr. Bindu Kamal, she made it clear to me that she very much wanted to take a collaborative approach with the city, that we were on the same page on that. We reached out to the city. We wanted to discuss resolving this before it came back to you. The city's position throughout every single one of those discussions is comply with a permit. That's been the position, comply with the permit. If you comply with a permit, I don't know what that resolution is. That's us basically saying we agree with the permit, which we don't and we never have.
So the difference is, we think you're not in compliance, you think you're in compliance, or you don't qualify for being labeled as non-compliant?
That's correct. We don't think we're non-compliant, and we don't believe that the, that the permit is actually currently in a position of enforcement while this appeal has been stayed.
Sure. I don't know if you have these numbers with you, but I wanted to dig in on some of just the past and, you know, maybe you can help me with this. So from the State's Health and Human Services Agency from 2016, they listed the Lompoc Artificial Kidney Center, and it was a big article about many different kidney centers. And it's listed it as a investor, a limited liability company, no problem there. It said its net revenue from patients, and before I list that number, maybe I'll list the number of patients serviced from that thing, from the state, was 157 patients. Do you have any idea if we're, are we kind of in line with those numbers of patients year to year since then? Or has it gone up or down?
It's down. It's close to 130 now.
Okay. And so with those 157 patients listed, the net revenue from those patients is listed according to the state is $8,217,000 with a net revenue per patient of $52,338. There is nothing wrong with making profit. There's nothing wrong with providing a service, never a problem with that. My curiosity is if, even if your group did not agree with the compliance but decided, hey, let's just figure this out, and the cost was under 50 grand, 100 grand, just so we don't have the EPA breathing down both of our necks, would it make sense for your group to maybe consider working with the city somehow to become in compliance with something it didn't fully agree with?
Well, I assure you that we have had ongoing conversations about what makes sense from both a compliance standpoint and from a business decision. And to clarify, notwithstanding what you heard from Mr. Berry, the EPA is not breathing down the kidney center's neck. The EPA is having productive, constructive conversations with us, and we are moving much faster toward resolution with EPA than we have with city staff.
So I hope that you understand the tough decisions that we have to make up here. I just hope that maybe you'll take a few moments to reassure our community who is stressed about whether or not they can access kidney dialysis services, that regardless of the decision at this council tonight, is it going to affect their day-to-day care at this kidney center? And maybe you can reassure or add some worry to them.
Well, as I stated, I am confident that the quality of care that the patients get will not decrease at the kidney center. Dr. Kamal pulls double duty between Cottage and Santa Barbara and the kidney center to come ensure that happens. She comes to the kidney center twice a week. Most heads of nephrology units visit their patients once a month. So the quality of care is not going to go down. I cannot speak to the amount of patients that the kidney center will be able to treat if tens to potentially over $100,000 of its expenses have to be diverted, not to mention staff and technical resources have to be diverted to implementing measures to comply with a permit that was not validly issued.
So I appreciate you saying that. I think at the end of the day, this is, this has been going on for some time, and I don't think there's going to be a resolution, easy resolution. And I understand both parties' points. We can argue all day long about the EPA, but that's a, that's a name that a lot of people around here don't feel like messing with because that could be very expensive on our end. And again, I just want to highlight that this is a for-profit company, offering a tremendous service to our community. And the amount of cost that it would take to just bring this into compliance, even though you don't think it's necessary, it's affordable by your group. And beyond that, this city has done a lot of things to offer some sort of way to make it happen. And it just seems like we are in a stalemate of disagreement. I just want to say one more thing, and I appreciate you clarifying about services continuing for our population here. I will say, I disagree. I don't think it's fair for you to quantify or qualify this council as having to make a tough decision that will impact patients. You've just stated that that won't change. The care for our patients will not change in this community. So I don't think it's fair to put it on me or anyone at this council that we're going to affect the quality of care of a kidney dialysis patient. Is that fair?
So I want to apologize if my comments sounded as if I was suggesting that you were somehow responsible with making a decision that might mean fewer patients get treated. That was not my intent, and I apologize if I wasn't clear about that. But I would also like to say, I think similarly, that I don't think it's fair that the kidney center and its patients that contribute as little as they do to the treatment plan for life-sustaining treatment that they choose to undertake every single day should bear the burden of the city's negotiations with the agencies.
But you're also saying they won't be bearing the burden regardless of our decision tonight. That's what you said just a few minutes ago.
The kidney center will be bearing the burden of the decision to allow the permit to stand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
City Attorney, can you just clarify for me if, if, if the kidney center is saying that they are not discharging 10,000, they're not getting near that, and why can't we classify them or reclassify them to Class 2? Or is that something that can be considered? I mean, because the, the letter from the EPA clearly states that they disapproved our intent to have them defined as domestic wastewater. So that wasn't up to us. They, the EPA already said, look, don't try to pull a fast one, they're not domestic waste. However, if, and I do recall, and it wasn't until it was brought up just now, that, that I do recall that at that time, we were, or they were considered, not we, but they were considering an expansion, and that was something that had come up, but it wasn't necessarily the basis for our, our issues or whatever, but that was something that had come up. Is there a possibility that they can be reclassified to Class 2? And how do we verify that? Do we need to do the legwork to verify that then?
Well, I think one of the things that we're asking the kidney center to do is to install the sampling point so that we can determine whether they are, whether they may be adversely affecting the wastewater treatment plant by causing interference or pass-through or endangerment to employees of the wastewater system. That's one of the conditions of the permit, is to install the sampling point. And if the, it looks like that their discharges are not similar to the first sample that was taken back when we did the NOV, which was showing chloride at three times the concentration of the allowable limit and sodium at two times the concentration of the allowable limit, then the permit requirements can be removed, but we need to install the sample point first.
We have no way to test it at that point.
But the requirement for them to comply with the, with the, with the three, that the testing units and the three items that we just discussed is because they're being classified as Class 1?
Well, yeah, well, the utility director can require a sampling point from any user. But you're right, they are being classified as Class 1 because their, the utility director has determined that they are a significant industrial user based on the initial sample that was taken with the three times the chloride concentration and the two times the sodium concentration of the allowable limit. If they were classified as a Class 2, any user who discharges industrial waste less than 10,000 gallons per day on average and whose discharge may contain unusual amounts of compatible pollutants, exceed applicable regulations, standards, or limitations, contain incompatible pollutants, or be judged to have any other special characteristics requiring site-specific discharge limits. They, I mean, I guess this is something that's within, this is a question for the utility director or the utility department, I guess.
So, agreed. So part of this boils down to the, part of this boils down to the discretion of the director. And, and I think, you know, when this, when this situation started, it was somebody else, and it was their discretion. And I get that it's been ongoing, and I get that there's been a lot of points. I feel like there's been some resolution along the way because they have seized use of the, of the salt unit. And so I wonder if, if there's a way, in the spirit of compromise, that we can kind of consider what Councilmember Vega had said? I'm not saying let's put this off, but what I'm saying is, can there be a compromise where we don't put ourselves in hot water by maybe going back and having our director really look at it with a fresh set of eyes for what is currently the situation today? Not what all this historical information, because even when I went back to the historical information, it's a lot of stuff. But look at it for what it is today, consider whether the classification is correct or not, and maybe wait to make any kind of final ruling because there is still their issue with the EPA or whatever their compliance is going to be. And anything we do could potentially offset any work we've done as a city to fix our issues as a utilities division or as, in our water division. So I don't want to undo all the work that staff has done to become compliant with the EPA as a city, as a division, as a water plant. We can't risk that for all of the residents of Lompoc, for a small minority, understanding that even that small minority is in a life-or-death situation. But still, again, it puts this council in a very hard position. So is there any way, in the spirit of compromise, that we can figure this out? And I don't want to say tiptoe around, but maybe tiptoe around if we can consider what they're saying. Listen, we've seized operation of the, of the, of the salt unit, and let's go back and look, are they classified correctly, at least for now? City Attorney, only you can tell us if that is something that can be considered without unraveling and undoing months and over a year worth of work to bring the City of Lompoc to that level of comfort and almost, I want to say kumbaya, with the EPA because we weren't their favorite.
I just don't know how we're going to get there without having the sampling point installed at the kidney center to determine what their discharge is, what their discharge levels are of sodium and chloride. If, if we just, if we do not have the sampling point, then I don't see, you know, if they install the sampling point and it's, looks like their, their discharges are under the limits and are fine, and they're not hurting our, not contributing to the exceedances at our wastewater plant, then the permit requirements can go away. But we don't have a sampling point to even know that information. And, and another point is, like I mentioned earlier, even if there were no permit, even if the kidney center was not being required to have a permit from the city, the director still has the ability to require that any user give us results from a sampling point of their discharges. And so presumably, the regulatory agencies would still be interested in that because we have permitted this user as a significant industrial user. If the council removes the permit, then we've then removed it, but that's all going to be public record, and I have a feeling that the utility director may, that, that all agencies interested may be interested in knowing what the discharges are from the kidney center. So I don't, I don't have an idea for a great compromise right now. It's kind of what we've been trying to work on-
Right.
... for three years.
And before we discuss a potential compromise, we do need to go to public comment because we're trying to solve a problem without the, going through the full process. So I love that you want to talk about a solution, but it's, timing is everything.
Your Honorable Mayor, may I propose a compromise for consideration? And I think that it goes directly to Councilmember Cordova's point here.
You are welcome to do it after public comment. I'll invite you back up to do that.
Understood.
Because we, I have some more questions for staff that I'd like to get clarified before I hear any solutions. Councilmember Ball.
I also have a couple of questions for staff, but if you'd like to go to-
I think, I think at this point, we really do need to give the public a chance to comment before we get into a discussion of additional questions because they might have some questions that we could also ask. And this discussion is not going to be an easy one, but it's an important one. So, thank you. I will invite you back up after we do public comment. So we will now have public comment on item number five. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Floor is now open.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I first want to applaud the council members for your interest and your questions and your concerns to get this resolved positively for the vulnerable citizens of Lompoc. Thank you. From what it sounds like, it sounds like initially it was a hit job on this business, anonymous call and one sample, not suggesting by anyone in this room at all, but it just sounds very unfair. You have a business owner and city staff that seem very reasonable, intelligent, and should be able to work this out, compromise, work together. It sounds like everyone is reasonable. It sounds like everyone is reasonable. We've all have very dear friends, I would imagine, that need these services. And this is so important that it gets worked out for these citizens in a positive way for this facility. And again, thank you for trying to work this out.
My name is Ron Cock, real citizen of Lompoc. Honorable Mayor, Oswald, distinguished council members and lawyers and the doctor. I've sit and listened to your, your, your story. Working for the government for 40 years, I can understand how government agencies work. The moment they get something in their head, it needs to be resolved. If you do anything different, you reestablish, it will look like to the government that you're trying to find a workaround. What I would really suggest is a collaboration, is to find out exactly what the EPA is, is asking of your center. So that now we have a clear vision, so that now the government, the city government, the council, the lawyers can work with you. The onus is not on the council or the government of this, of this city. In good faith, the idea was to support because now you have an issue that needs to be mitigated and it takes every one of us. And it begins at the center. Finding out what are the requirements and do those requirements fit within the scope of our discharge. If that doesn't happen, then it falls back to the center. Yes, people's lives are at jeopardy. But yet, at the same time, you have a government requirement. And we have a great legal council who can help our city as well as yourself. CJ, you and I need to talk because when I look at my water bill, it looks like I'm paying 100% of my discharge. So, I'm not sure how water coming in changes with water going out. I think that's something that needs to be looked at. If the water that's coming in, particularly my resident, it looks like I'm paying for the same amount of water that's leaving. I wouldn't think that's any different from any business in the city of Lompoc. Thank you.
Did we have any written communication on this item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Terry Hammons, Lompoc. Well, I never thought that I would come to a council meeting and tell you that I'm a dialysis patient. I found out that my kidneys were failing me. I found out that somehow, some way, a chemical or something went wrong and I developed this disease. So, I began to deal with that. I went to Dr. Kamal. I fought it, I resisted. I, I couldn't believe that this was happening to me. I got adopted by a family that I never wanted, but I'm there. And then I have to deal with this issue. What's going to happen to me? Because the family that's taking care of me now is in jeopardy. What are you going to do with my family? Are you going to say goodbye? Are you going to say you can't be here anymore because your wastewater is destroying our city? We know that's not true, but that's what's being accused. I say to you, you need to take this and put it back there. To them, let them start working it out. Take it away from us, the patients. It's not your, it, this, this government representative body should not be making that decision tonight. This needs to be resolved. Some of you already have that in your mind and I know you do. Let's get this resolved. Please do that. We will still with our, stay, stay with our family and hopefully, we will come out of this a lot better.
I'm sorry, you have to come to the microphone. We must record it.
I am a kidney patient. And basically, the problem here is hard water and soft water. And I personally feel it's a misclassification of the Kidney Center. We have to, we no longer have a kidney. So, the machines need the soft water and our, our blood is taken in and put back in and our bodies need the same. And that's all I really want to say, is it's very important medically and they take very good care of us there and they, like he said, have become my second family. And I want you to comply so that we don't have to go out of town. And I cannot believe that Lompoc, California, out of the whole state, is having this issue as to whether using hard or soft water. And I want you guys to consider that.
Seeing no one call and no one rise for public comments, we will complete our public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion and potential resolution. So, I do have a couple of questions and I'd like to start with, with Mr. Berry. So, if the appeal is denied, does that mean they lose their permit or does the current permit stand?
I will ask city attorney to keep me honest here, but if the appeal is denied, that means that the Kidney Center is found in violation and the permit stands. And they will have to come into compliance with the permit.
But it still has to come into compliance?
That is correct.
So, they can still function and come into compliance and we can provide a window for them to do that?
Absolutely.
So, what do you need as Utility Director in order to consider the classification is correct or not? Is it being able to test and randomly test to see if it's consistently?
Sure. The, the important thing here that, that I really think is important to mention is that we can talk all day about what is or what isn't, but the fact is, we have one data point. And that one data point says we have an issue. To, to prove beyond the shadow of a doubt and prove that the Kidney Center in the future is not a categorical user requires empirical data. That is the only thing the regulating agencies would accept, that we should accept no less. To do that, we do need a representative sample point so that we can measure the volume and the veracity and the strength of the waste stream.
And that would then help you determine if it is the right classification? And if it tests, prove that it's not, you have the ability to adjust the classification and their permits still stand, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, these classifications, as you just said, are done through testing and collecting actual data. If we don't deny this appeal and start working with them to make the adjustments and, and install the equipment we need in order to do the testing, in order to determine if they're right, the consideration, and the EPA decides that we have violated our own AOC and SOU, will we be fined? Likely.
I, I think, uh, I would ultimately defer to city attorney for that, but I think it stands a very good chance that, uh, the EPA will absolutely take enforcement action against the city.
And those fines are not passed on to the Kidney Center. Those are something we have to pay out and clarify that they come out of the general fund. They don't come out of any of the water or wastewater utilities. They come out of general fund.
I will defer to our CFO to answer that. Mr. City Manager, do you have determined answer on that?
I'm, this, I would, I'm going to verify it later, but I believe my prior experience is it would come out of the general fund. It's not from the ratepayers.
Right. And so, it's not from the ratepayers, it's from everyone. And so, the general fund would be hit, which currently we have less than half a million in reserves and we have very little predicted excess left in this particular budget cycle.
That would be correct.
So, this would impact our ability to improve parks and streets and all the things that the entire community, and we can't pass it on to the Kidney Center for failure to take action and us taking the repercussions of what is very clear from the EPA. All right. I am disheartened to hear that the Kidney Center has said they have hunted for and find no one available to give them actual. And they asked the city. And my understanding is we cannot legally recommend any one organization. We can give a list of contractors, we can give a list of potential consultants, but we can't find and do the work for them, correct?
We cannot find and do the work for them, but we understand the importance of this. And staff has gone down the road of helping and, and I do want to rebut one point that was brought up earlier, that staff declined to help the Kidney Center. That simply wasn't true. In a phone conversation with the Kidney Center Council, myself and our council, as well as our staff, we did offer to help them find a representative sample point, assuming they provided the plumbing diagrams of the facility.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a quick question, Mr. Berry. Where are the sample points at for Vandenberg Village and Vandenberg Base?
Uh, I will ask staff to clarify, but I believe it's Floridale Bridge.
So, we're actually dipping?
Pardon?
We're dipping into the sewer main itself?
That's correct.
Why don't we do it with the Kidney Center?
That is the intent, but we need the representative sample point to do that.
Well, there was a big issue about this before, we go in with Oak Street and the selling of properties there and easements on sewers, they're right there. We couldn't go somewhere downstream and sample? It would be representative, I mean, it's...
Right. And that is where the city has looked at, staff has looked at installing a representative sample point is downstream of the sewer, outside of the building, because one of the requirements that we do have is 24-hour access to that sample point.
They've got to have a cleanout.
The cleanout is insufficient in size and depth. Device that the city uses for measurements is a very large device. It's a very common device in wastewater operations and it does need to sit inside of a very large manhole.
There's not one of those anywhere near the Kidney Center?
There isn't that would provide a representative point.
Councilmember Cordova.
I have a couple of questions. So, do we require the installation of the sample, you know, or the installation of the devices for the sample points from anyone else in town?
Yes.
And I, I thought I heard that earlier. How many, roughly about how many already have those and provide that information willingly?
So, I, I'm not sure that I have that number at my fingertips. I don't, eight? Six? Thank you, I apologize. It sounds like that number is six. We can absolutely confirm that though and provide that to council.
Okay. And then, um, my other question was going to be, and maybe this is for the city attorney, but, um, do we know what the EPA is collaborating with the Kidney Center on, um, to resolve, I'm assuming, what are issues with the Kidney Center or its operation that the EPA? Do we know what those things are? Or are we allowed to know what those things are?
I don't think we know. I think those are, um, like he said, confidential settlement discussions that they're having with the Kidney Center.
Right. And so, my point to that is, is that without us really knowing what their compliance issues are or what they're collaborating with the EPA to resolve, it's an, it's an unfair advantage for us because then we're left to try and fit a mold that we don't even know if it's really going to fit or help or really make an impact if they have other issues or a slew of other issues or whatever the case is. So, I just kind of wanted to bring that into perspective because the city's issues are out there for everybody to see, but without us really knowing what their deficiencies, if they exist, or what they're collaborating on with the EPA, I'm assuming if they're collaborating with the EPA, it's because, same thing, EPA looked at us and said, hey, you got to come into compliance with all these things. I'm assuming that it's similar, that if the EPA is collaborating with them, it's because there's a slew of issues or maybe a few issues that they're collaborating to help fix. So, it makes it a little difficult for us to really know by us, um, trying to continue to assist whether we're really getting anywhere or not. The other, the other, the last point that I'll make is, um, that if we, I know that when we first started talking about this, there was talks of some kind of system and it was going to be over a million dollars, up to $2 million. I mean, if we're talking up to about $100,000, I really feel that as an entity, are we saying is, and I guess this is not for you, this would be for the appellant, but that they cannot simply come up with that financial sum to be able to, to assist themselves, I guess, into getting past this hurdle and re, and, and potentially getting reclassified. And I realize that there's no money-back guarantee here because if you do install the systems and it shows that you are in a different category, then you get reclassified, there's a benefit in the future, but you've made the investment, I realize that, but I don't know. I just think that it's, in, in the whole looking back on everything, I think the amount is not as large as what it used to be. And I think that there definitely is a point of resolution tonight. It's just going to have to take some, uh, some additional effort from the Kidney Center as well.
Councilmember Ball.
So, I hope this all works out, but I have a slightly different tact I want to take real quick and I hope you'll humor me with this. Part of this discussion is included, should the Utility Director have discretion, discretion for X, Y, or Z? And I thought, you know what, this is a great opportunity to see if CJ Berry is the right guy. And what I mean by that is that maybe you could remind us up here at council, because I know me personally, I don't have the degree in anything that has to do with utilities. I'm not qualified, not smart enough to make all those decisions. But we hired somebody recently, you, to be in this position to make some of these hard choices and for the buck to stop at your desk. Maybe you can remind this council some of your qualifications and education and background and what you've done that qualifies you to make some of these harsh decisions. Would you humor me with a little reminder?
Sure. I'm a career public servant. I've spent my entire career working in municipal utilities. My career spans 20-plus years working in everything from small to large organizations that are vertical as well as horizontal. My educational background includes an undergraduate degree in mathematics, a bachelor of science in management, a master's of business administration, a master's of science, and a doctorate with an emphasis in engineering and information technology.
Thank you. I am, again, really impressed and so grateful that you work for the city of Lompoc. But beyond that, I just want to remind the community and I hope that you realize it is not up to council to get into the weeds on every single issue and try to figure this out alone. We have an incredibly talented staff. It is on them to work diligently and in good faith as often as possible with people within our community. But we have highly qualified individuals that have been putting in a ton of time to try to figure this out from the city's perspective. Again, I hope we listen to the professionals. Thank you.
Sure. And if, if I may add, although the question wasn't asked, but I would like to put it out there, as we talk about sums of money, which, which granted relatively are, are large depending on where... depending on where you're at on the economic spectrum, whether it's $20,000, $30,000, I think it should be pointed out that the city has spent substantially more than that working with the kidney center to date and trying to help them get into compliance. Substantially more.
Councilmember Vega.
I'll ask CJ first. To get a test point, what was the cost there? Was there going to be having to be an opening, a reopening of the sewer system for the kidney center to have a test point at the area that you needed?
Right, so the quote that we do have is date stale. I have asked staff first thing as a top priority tomorrow to refresh that quote with a local contractor so that we can provide that information to the kidney center. And again, that's not an endorsement of any one particular entity over another. That's just simply us trying to help move this along.
Gotcha.
The quote that we did receive, I wanna say, was just a bit less than $8,000.
Yeah, I think, I think where we, where I'm hoping everyone's going here, we're looking for a resolution and a compromise. You guys have said expended time. Everyone's expended time, but you know, for the need and the want and for the expectation of people that are utilizing this medical facility. Councilmember Ball mentioned, are they for profit? Well, so is the hospital, so is everything else. I don't think we should indicate that we should only advocate for nonprofits. I think that what we need to do is we have to advocate for people. There's a moral responsibility here to, for us to work this out and make it work. So if there's a test station that needs to be had here, yes, I understand there's been time spent, but there's also been a change in utility directors. Regardless of time, there has to be different thought processes. It's a different attorney. There's different outcomes. There's different responses that came from the EPA. We've gone down the path, but now we have a pretty clear path. What we need to do, there's been a dissension that, hey, we're miscategorized because of the permit. It's admitted that there's only been one sample taken. So I'm pretty sure you're open to compromise and making things work here. You know, we're just, we're here as legislators and policymakers trying to make something work. I'd like to hear, as promised from the mayor, I'd like to hear from the attorney for the kidney center to find out if there's, he mentioned some sort of compromise that we can at least listen to. I think it's to our benefit to listen and see what the kidney center might have in mind as far as on the legal end. And I appreciate what you do. Thank you so much, okay? I just, I know it's a tough job, so.
As soon as I make sure we've asked all the questions we need of staff, I will be inviting the appellant back in.
That's fine. I know that you promised the attorney to come up right after public comments, so I'd like to hear from him. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I was actually gonna ask the same question, but I'll make a final statement before we hear that and before Mayor Osborn continues. The appeal process is the appellant's right to be heard. So I find it a little insensitive for us to talk about, you know, accolades and expertise and everything because we also have doctors in the room that could do the same thing, and they could talk about, you know, the fact that they're trying to keep people alive. So I find that very insensitive, and I don't think that that's the direction that we need to go in. So I would like to also hear from the kidney center to see what they have to say about a possible resolution with the city.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just for clarity, it's not an issue of for-profit or not-for-profit. It was simply to point out that the group that is resisting what we feel is something that we're, some of us are convinced that will bring them into compliance, is that if we did not budge up here, that they would not be able to afford to make these changes and that it would impact the quality of service to patients. I personally don't buy that. And there's nothing wrong with a for-profit business. We encourage all of those to be here. We'd love for that to be here. This is not an issue of that. This is an issue of trying to bring this into compliance after exhaustive efforts by city staff to try to figure this out. Has there been any budget on the other side? So my point was just, I did not want patients in our community to be stressed that if council made this decision that the kidney center could not afford to make these changes. I don't fear, I don't feel that that's a fair statement. So anyway, I hope that makes sense. That's what I was trying to clarify.
I believe that's all the questions for staff at the moment. You may get called back up. The appellant may step forward.
Thank you. I will offer you my idea for a proposal, propose way forward. I know Dr. Kamal, the director of the kidney center, would also like to make some comments, so I'd ask that she have the opportunity to do so. I'm hearing very clearly the tension that you're feeling between this process and your communications with EPA. My proposal is this. And let me also say that I'm pleased to hear that we'll be getting information from staff about that consultant bid. I completely understand it's not an endorsement. That's never what I asked for. I just wanted a list of contractors. So we look forward to that information. That's a very reasonable number. We can absolutely work with that. What I would propose is that the council grant the appeal so that the permit is no longer effect. Now, within the next 45 to 60 days, I expect to be able to complete the negotiation with EPA, get a signature on an agreement from both sides that EPA is pleased with, that will become a public document that you all will see and will be able to study. You will see what EPA is requiring. Without giving away too much, it will provide you the information and the staff the information, the information the staff needs to be able to then appropriately characterize the kidney center as a user and what type of user. As it stands, the permit doesn't do that. The permit should not stay in effect. It should not be stayed. It should not be suspended. It should be withdrawn. Let us finish the EPA process. You'll know, you'll have confidence when we finish that process that EPA has blessed it, obviously, because their signature will be on it. So if it's good enough for EPA, you will be able to use that in your own discussions with EPA. You'll see what they're asking for. You'll get the information you need for the classification, and then we'll come back and talk. That's my proposal.
Thank you for that. You said that Dr. Kamal would like to make some comments. She's welcome to come to the floor.
If there are no questions from the council members.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bindu Kamel. I'm the medical director and CEO of the kidney center. The previous medical director and CEO is no longer with us, as you can see. So it's been a really difficult and traumatic time for us. Enough change, too, which has made all of us work together and harder. We provide life-sustaining treatment for our patients. And I can assure you that since coming up here to Lompoc as a pure coincidence, covering a physician in 2005, the exact date was October 505 I started coming here, and I have been coming here. And I'll continue to do so as long as I have my health. Kidney disease is unexpected for so many of us. And it's age-related, too. So the population is skewed to the right and to the most vulnerable. The physicians that I work with that come here, and I will assure you that we will continue to operate, profit or no profit. I realize this is on record because we take an oath, and we will live by it, and we do. I do worry that the word discretion worries me because this isn't a supermarket. These are human lives. If there is a person here, such as the director, who can use his discretion to work with us. When I stepped into this role, it was a crash course, and we are swimming because sinking was not an option for us. We want to, the first meeting I had with everyone here, I had said, whatever it is that you need, we can possibly do, we will do. We, in the kidney world, understand regulation. CMS is our forever shadow. That centers for Medicaid and Medicare and Medicaid services. They regulate us. We are, I would say, in my humble opinion, of any medical specialty, we are the most regulated. So we understand the rules we must live by. We are a five-star facility. Here, in this town, we can compete with any facility in the country for quality of care that we provide. It isn't easy because we do lack resources here. So whether you're in Santa Barbara, California, or whether you are an hour north in Lompoc, California, the requirements are the same. The resources for our patients are very different. The issue with the sampling, it did start with a complaint about a water softener. It not only is it not tapped, the physical softener is gone. We welcome you, I do, and I'll be, I'll make sure if you tell me, I will be there myself to come and see the kidney center. I made a decision to put the renovation. It needs renovation. It needs television. It needs things for patients. We put it on hold because we wanted to see where this goes and what the expense would be because I'm responsible for the functioning of that facility. We all are. So the sampling, if you came there, it comes right at the point of discharge. Of course, it's gonna be high. Water is frightening for us. Water is most important for us. We deal with the water that we're given. It's hard water. That's why we use a softener, not to add to the solutes, to the system. We know we don't contribute anything significant. That first letter, I believe it's October 1, I wanna say 2018, maybe. It has my name on it and a lot of math in it. We don't, and we will not contribute significantly to your water system or in, and affect it. We just don't use that much water to be able to do that. But where you do something matter, doesn't it? The testing site, where it was easy to do, and it's true, it's easy to do to collect water from there, is not the proper site to do. One should be fair. So we said, you have to remember, at the end of the day, I'm a doctor. I've had to become a builder, learn about the sewer system. I will do anything for that center because our patients deserve it. We pulled the architecture of the building, and I'm surprised to hear somewhere that it wasn't provided. We have it. There's a lateral sewer where the water, so we wash hands, we use the toilet, right? There's all kinds of water that's used. If you go to the sample where it's most concentrated, of course, we're, we're going to look like we're not in compliance. I just want to set the record straight that we have done a lot, too, and we appreciate what the city has done. We have asked the city if you could find one, one dialysis unit in the state of California or in the country, for that matter, out of being desperate to be in compliance, that we could call and say, do you guys have a flow meter? Where do you guys test it? What company do you use? It isn't about spending the money alone. We'll spend the money, but we spend the money on a company that doesn't deal with dialysis. Find one place for us, one unit. We've called up and down the coast. There are cities that don't allow softeners, so we call them. Do you have this onerous burden to be able to prove time and time again, this is your discharge at the discretion of the city or someone? They said, no. We got rid of the water softening system, and they said, okay. So if, one, one facility that is using a company that is equivalent to us, Lompoc Hospital got rid of their water softening system, they're in compliance. No proof needed, but we must show proof. Doesn't seem fair to us. To me, it doesn't seem fair. One dialysis facility that has to provide this kind of system, we will call them, then you don't have to feel that you're endorsing someone and say, who do you use? There is specialty in this field, in the dialysis field, and we will use them. We didn't find any. We're asking the city council, I'm not sure who to ask, to be able to say, find us that one dialysis unit that has our burden of proof that we must provide. And if we are the only dialysis facility that must do it, then find us a company. My worry is this. We find a company that doesn't do dialysis. And then they say, well, we're in violation still. We got rid of the primary problem, which was the water softening. We are working with the EPA, and my understanding is that they very much want for us to continue to operate, continue to function, and they will, they are working with us. And whatever it is that, you say, United States EPA, you do what they ask. And that's what we will do. And they seem to be, from what I understand from our attorney, Mr. Abdul-Nur, that they seem to want to help us and be in compliance. We understand about compliance. So we hired a company to come and do the sampling in the lateral sewer. We had that information, where to collect. We even looked into, we've been dealing with vandalism at the building, and all you have to do is drive by there, and you'll see that we keep boarding up the Pine Avenue side. So we thought, the company that came and said, okay, we can look to collect, but you've gotta guarantee our product. We, you know, it has to be there because it's gonna be visible. So we said, okay. I said, hire a security company, who were there till late. So we figured we'll just overlap till, we figured most vandalism won't happen after, you know, 5:00 a.m. Because then our lights come on pretty early by then. We're willing to do that, too. But they came and looked and said, we don't test in the sewer system. So we have made good faith effort to be able to test. We've done it on our own. And it's a time sink for me. I would much rather be able to take care of our patients and be able to be in compliance with CMS and to be able to maintain the five-star facility that CMS gives, and it's an honor. with CMS and to be able to maintain the five-star facility that CMS gives, and it's an honor for us to be able to do that. And you can be proud of the kidney center. And there's a, there's an article years ago, when I started coming here in the Lompoc Record, that said, "Lompoc Artificial Kidney Center Serving the Community Quietly." I would add steadily, consistently, and excellently. Help us be in compliant with whatever it is that you want for us to be able to do. Give us, tell us who to call, which company to call, what is it that you want for us to do? This permit hangs over us. I do remember the violation, the second violation. I, I came in in my scrubs, ready to see patients, and I was handed this notice, and our director had just passed away. And since then, we've been doing this, and I just want to assure you and the council, we will do what it is that needs to be done. Let us work with the EPA. Let us come back to you, if that's something that you would allow. Or give us a company that does this type of dialysis work. What other equivalent dialysis unit is out there that does? We're not the only, Lompoc, I understand, isn't the only city that requires no water softening? So if there's others, tell us who they are, and we can go to them, and the city won't have any conflict about endorsing someone. And if the city doesn't care about that, the first time I am hearing that this is $7,500, we would do that. I've taken your time. Thank you for your attention, and I do appreciate all the work that the city has done, and it has also cost us time and money doing this. So we are interested in coming to reconciliation, maybe doing some remodeling of the current treatment center. We're not expanding right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I do have a question for our city attorney before a discussion of a potential compromise. If we grant the appeal, that means the permit's revoked, and they can no longer function at all? Because the permit allows them to function?
No. If you, if you grant the appeal, then that means they can operate without a wastewater permit from the city.
Okay. And that goes against our AOC, because of how we currently have them classified?
I, I don't, I wouldn't say it goes against the AOC, but it does put the city in a bad light from EPA with respect to not enforcing our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. So I, I realize that we all want to help those that need the service, and we're not trying to deny anybody their service, and we have to come from it from an unemotional place, based on our responsibility to the community and the EPA requirements that we have. So it's in our best interest to get it back off of council's plate and back onto staff's plate. And the best way to do this is to deny the appeal, so that it goes back to staff to continue working on this, and for us to put a window on, so that there is a window to work with the staff and the kidney center while they wait to get the EPA, and us get really clear with them exactly what we need from them in order to determine their classification is either confirmed or changed. And one of those is getting the testing site installed. So that would happen at the staff level, and it would allow us to not have to make the decision that is beyond really our scope of understanding as far as how a kidney center should or shouldn't work, or how the wastewater should or shouldn't work, because we do have both consultants and staff, and so does the appellant. So I'd like to recommend that we deny the appeal, provide 90 days to work with the appellant to reach a compromise while they're getting their EPA notice, determine exactly what you need and what systems need to be in place to gather actual data to determine what their new permit level would be, so that we are enforcing something that is fair and exactly that. That's, that's where I see this going, is that granting the appeal gives way too much leeway, and our responsibility is still oversight. But denying the appeal means the permit stands as we go through a process of installing what needs to happen in order to get the actual data, in order to determine what your new permits level is, and work with you on what your EPA decides. Keeps us out of hot water and allows you a window. So that's my proposal, Councilmember Cordova.
City Attorney, is there a possibility to grant the appeal with restrictions that allows them to go back and finish their work out with the EPA, as the attorney stated? Basically, I guess, first and foremost, what is your response to the proposition of the attorney?
Thank you for that question. I was thinking about it during the testimony after he made that compromise proposal, and just a suggestion that could work is to put the city in a better position with respect to an enforcement action from the EPA, which is what we're concerned about, for not enforcing our ordinance. I think we could get a similar result to the compromise that was proposed by, instead of granting the appeal and then waiting for 60 days to see what deal the kidney center can work out with the EPA, we deny the appeal. And the council can strongly suggest, in your motion to staff, to not take any enforcement action against the kidney center for a period of 60 days or 90 days, whatever you'd like. And then, at that time, we will see, that'll give the time necessary for the kidney center to come to some kind of agreement with the EPA that he said was forthcoming in 30 to 60 days. If we give 90 days, that should be more than enough time. And if no agreement has worked out, then the permit will be in place, and the kidney center will need to comply. But if agreement, an agreement is worked out between the kidney center and the EPA, then we will get that information, as the kidney center's attorney said we would, and if it looks that the discharge levels of salts by the kidney center are not anything we need to be concerned about, then we can remove, we as a staff can remove the classification of the kidney center as a, as a Class 1 user and not require the permit anymore. So it's essentially the, it's the same as the compromise proposed by the kidney center. It's giving the 60- or 90-day period to work out the deal with the EPA. It's just that it puts the city in a better light with respect to an enforcement action from the EPA, because we are continuing to enforce our ordinance by keeping the permit in place and keeping the pressure on to come, for, for the kidney center to come into compliance. And I'd also say that, if you'll note, I suggested that as part of your motion, you would strongly suggest to staff to not take any enforcement action against the kidney center for 90 days or 60 days, whatever you want to make it. That's because we as staff need to retain the discretion to enforce, because if we get an enforcement action from the EPA for not enforcing our permits or our codes, we need to be able to enforce at that point. So I don't want to take the ability of staff to completely away to enforce the permit, but the council can strongly suggest that for 60 or 90 days, staff not do any enforcement against the kidney center while this proposed negotiation happens between the kidney center and the EPA.
Any more questions?
I just have one more technical question. Is there any perceived consideration of reduction in the, I guess, in the fact that they've removed the salt unit from the facility, and when we tested, it was present?
I think we did the test, you're talking about the one sample that we have?
Yeah, the one sample. Was that taken when they still had the, the, the water softening unit?
Yeah. My understanding is that was several years ago, when they still had the water softener.
Right. So speaking technically, is there any consideration that their numbers would have automatically dropped by seizing the use of the salt tank?
Yeah, that, that could have happened, but we don't know if we don't have a...
Right. And I understand that, but I, I just want to know, like, yes or no, because it is a technical question. I don't have the answer to that question. I'm just saying that as a means for the EPA to kind of better understand our position, that we don't want to back down from what our municipal code is and we have to enforce, but understanding that, hey, they've seized operation of the use of this unit, and so therefore, there could be a perceived consideration that the numbers would have dropped, but that's why we would allow them to go through, finish their, whatever their resolution is going to be with the EPA, and, and allow us then the opportunity to then determine what is the best category that they would fall under. I'm just making that...
That's right. And I think we can do that with the compromise that I proposed.
Okay.
Because the permit will stay in effect. There would be 90 days of no enforcement for them to work out the deal with the EPA, and then if that works everything out, we can remove the permit requirement at that point. But I'd rather be in that position with the permit still in effect, rather than take the permit away, and then we have to reinstitute it if there's no deal worked out with the EPA.
And I agree, and I think that it's, it's just how we word it is going to be either helpful or not so helpful for them as well. And so that's the only reason why I'm saying, if our position is that we are going to uphold it, because currently, based on the data that we have right now and the information that we have right now, we have to uphold our Lompoc municipal code. However, we believe that there may potentially be an opportunity to re-categorize them, but we want, you know, I don't know. I'm just putting it out there. And I, and I really appreciate, City Attorney, your ability to really bring the compromise along with the attorney for the kidney center.
Was there something you'd like to clarify, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Again, I just want to remind council that the water softener was a part of what got us here today, but it is not the only matter. We still, without respect to the water softener, do need to be able to measure the volume and the strength of the waste stream, so that we can accurately determine how do we classify their permit, if it is applicable? So absent that data, absent that empirical data, we cannot.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball?
So I've learned quite a bit tonight, and I thank you all for staying up with us, and I hope we're all learning something on this. I want to be sensitive to this in a, in a different way. I really appreciate the doctor speaking and putting herself out there to enlighten us and educate us. And you said something that's very critical, that I, that we all have to take in consideration. You mentioned that with the EPA, it is what it is. Sometimes we just have to come into compliance with the EPA. We can't necessarily fight with them. So it sounds to me like the two parties are facing a similar situation, in that you're working with the EPA to figure out your issues and stay out of trouble, keep your doors open, make sure that you can continue to provide service. And at the same time, the city of Lompoc is in a similar catch here, in that we are dealing with issues with the EPA, and it's multiple, there's multiple layers here. So please understand our caution and our, doing our best to do our due diligence to figure this out from our perspective, because worst-case scenario for us as a city isn't pretty. It's really, really bad. And we may not like it, but there's an entity out there that can just say, you didn't do it, we fine you, we'll take your money. And so on our side, that is something that we have to take very seriously. I, again, I, I want to commend the kidney center for offering the service that it does and the dedication and commitment that you all have to this community, and I hope that that doesn't change. And it sounds to me, regardless of some of these, what I hope are short-term issues, is that there is still that heartbeat for Lompoc, and that you stay as committed as you are right now to continuing that high level of service. Please understand our, the issues that we have and the caution that we feel that we need to take. But I do feel that that is a pretty decent compromise. If in 90 days, we cannot get any information about your relationship or updated constructive conversations that you've had with the EPA that could enlighten us to what we need to do and could add confidence to our decisions, I think that's a fair compromise for me. That's, that seems reasonable. But we've got to defend our duties to make sure that we're not putting our city's money in jeopardy just because we had a whim. We've got to be very cautious here.
So I'll restate my motion with the attorney's input, that we deny the appeal, strongly suggest that staff not take enforcement for 90 days while the appellant finalizes with the EPA, that we provide the appellant with information regarding potential estimates and potential contractors, as we've promised, and to work with the kidney center, determine the best method for testing, so that we can help them determine their right classification, because without hard data, I believe the EPA will also be frustrated. And so I think ultimately, that is the minimum. I think we need to at least work with them, given the potential low cost of it. Actually, the clarification can only come from our staff. So after the clarification comes from our staff, you can work with our staff to determine clarification.
Is it not the denial of the...
Right. I understand what you probably want to understand, but we've already gotten direction from our city attorney, and after taking that direction, then you can clarify with him. So it is denying the appeal, so your permit stands, so that we are not in violation with the EPA. That gives you, and we're proposing a suggested 90-day window of non-enforcement, so that you have this window to get your agreement finalized with the EPA and share with us, so that we can work with you. In the meantime, we're going to get you the information about potential estimates and contractors that might be able to put at least, at the very minimum, the testing site in for us, because ultimately, we still need that, and I believe the EPA will.
My question is, does the March 2nd notice of violation...
Under the mayor's motion, the March 2nd notice of violation would stand, because the appeal is being denied, yes?
Yes. Okay. That's what I thought. So that's the motion. It takes into consideration everything that our city attorney has provided feedback on and keeps us in good standing with the EPA, but gives the appellant a window to come into compliance. Councilmember Vega?
Mayor, your motion here is to give the, strongly suggest that staff not enforce for 90 days, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for clarification, you know, the direction here is, I'd like for the record, is that staff, the intention here is staff is going to continue to work with the kidney center, to test, and actually, the direction would be to find out if they actually are a Category 1 or facility or not, okay? I just want for the record to be clear here, because they need to know what we're looking for and what the intent would be. I'm not sure if the utility director has any other input there for that, but I mean, we don't want to put words in their mouth, but I guess the testing would actually be the proof in the pudding, so to speak.
The clearest message I heard from our utility director is that without hard data about what is actually happening at the site, it makes it difficult for him to make the best judgment about the classification. And so that's why, at least the minimum of putting in a testing site is, would be helpful to all of us, whether it's the kidney center, the city, or the EPA.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second, oh, city clerk, she's got a question.
90 calendar days, correct?
Yes, yes.
And mayor?
Yes.
I did have a request from our utility director to, just before the council votes, he wanted to have a quick conversation with me in the conference room, just to make sure that we're on the same page about what we're doing.
Okay.
Additionally, I think it is a good idea, what, you don't have to conclude this in your motion if you don't want, but councilmember Cordova suggested maybe adding some language to the resolution about how they have removed their water softener, and that they, and that they, that that may, depending on the testing, result in a reduction of their discharge levels of pollutants. So I drafted a whereas that could be added to the resolution, which is, whereas, the city acknowledges and appreciates Lompoc area kidney centers disconnect, or Lompoc artificial kidney centers' disconnection of its water softener as one step in coming into compliance with the permit, which may lead to a reduction in pollutant discharge levels, subject to further sampling.
I will happily add that, and I'm sure I would get a second from councilmember Starbuck.
I will second.
All right, how long do you need to consult with?
I think we need two minutes.
All right, we will take a two-minute break for you to consult.
Thank you, mayor.
I know. Does the city attorney have any additional info for us?
No, mayor, we're on the same page, so we're comfortable with moving forward.
All right. Any additional questions before we vote? I'm just asking, it's, I gotta ask to make sure. All right, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, so we have one more topic. It is regarding squirrels. Because it's 10:45 and we're not allowed to go past 11, I want to make sure that we have just enough time to talk about it and complete our meeting, so I would like to ask for a half-hour extension with the hope that it doesn't take more than 15. Can I get a second?
I'll give you a second.
Thank you, let's vote. And that passes 4-1. All right, so our item number six is introduction of ordinance number 168421 prohibiting the feeding of wild animals in city parks and on public property, and I believe our city attorney is going to make the presentation.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mario Guerrero couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, so I will do this presentation. This is a much less technical topic than the last topic. This is about feeding wild animals in city parks and on city property. Parks and Rec staff contacted me regarding an issue with a number of squirrels at Beatty Park who are causing the parking structure, there are so many squirrels that they're causing the parking structure to potentially fail at Beatty Park, and staff wanted to know if there was something that could be done with respect to an ordinance to prohibit persons from feeding animals in the park or on other public property. And yes, so essentially, we have drafted that ordinance. There is some reasoning in the staff report about the policy benefits of not feeding animals in the parks and on public property. It actually is already illegal under state law as a, as something that the Department of Fish and Wildlife enforces, but it's obviously much more effective if we can enforce it at the local level here by adopting an ordinance. And the penalty for feeding animals in the park or on public property would be likely an administrative citation is what we would use, and that's $25 for a first violation, $100 for a second within the same 12-month period, and $500 for a third violation within the same 12-month period. And that is the staff report, so if you have any questions, I'm available.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, are there going to be signage put up or something, because no one's gonna, no one's gonna mind this ordinance, you know, without some sort of a sign, "Don't feed the whatever."
That's a good question. I will defer that to the...
Yeah, I, well, go ahead.
We'll have signage placed.
Are you in charge of that?
And I'll be out there, no, I'm just kidding. There will be signage out there, and then the rangers, park hosts. We're not looking to, you know, find people, that's not the intent. It really is to educate people out there and let them know the detriment to feeding the little guys, and, you know, if any of you have been out there, they'll just run right across your feet, and there's no fear factor with those guys.
Thank you, just a simple question, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Sort of want to piggyback off of councilmember Vega's comment in that a lot of times, we have put up signs for different things, and of course, the whole community just says, "Okay, new rules, we all comply," usually doesn't happen. So the next question is, and I know this is complicated, but over time, can you just elaborate a little bit on a reasonable but effective enforcement mechanism for this specific ordinance?
Yeah, obviously, I think there's repeat offenders that are going to end up getting a citation, but we're going to use sound judgment and talk to them, and our park staff and our rangers are very, you know, I think even with like all the COVID stuff, they're focused on education, and even before they're going to do a citation, they are always going to check with management to make sure it's the appropriate action.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, looking down the road on this, I've seen that parking lot, I mean, it's closed, and it's closed for a reason. What is the estimated cost that we need to repair that? I mean, now we have probably one of the most used parks in the city there, and we've taken 25% of the parking away because of squirrels, so it would be probably a priority to fix it. What are we looking at to do that? Any idea or plan on that?
So the first thing we need to do is have a structural engineer come in and do an assessment, and let us know, is it even still safe, that's why it's closed? And then obviously, out of that, we would determine what the cost would be to repair it. So we don't have the money for the structural engineer right now, and we surely don't have the money to do any repairs out there right now. So we haven't pursued either of those yet.
I do think, and I'll ask Kristi behind me, it's hard to turn around, but that we're going to be starting to try and trap more squirrels, too.
Yeah, we will be starting trapping as well, but we thought we would try, you know, doing this first and then start the trapping more, and it's, that's a full-court press on the squirrels.
And for clarification for the public, we're trapping and relocating. That is all we're allowed to do.
We are humane, yes.
Yes, okay, because I know that question would come up if we didn't ask it. Yeah, I felt it, you're not just staring at my cupcakes. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, where do we send these things?
So in my discussion with Mario when this first began a couple of months ago, they're looking at the far end of Ken Adams Park, so while we won't be doing anything to them, the mountain lions might have some new fat little treats coming to them.
And you know, it sounds like a funny question, but the erosion is huge, you know, it just seems like, I don't know that we're going to be able to fix it all, you know, but try it.
All right, so we'll open the floor for public comment on this item. You may come to the podium, you have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio, the floor is yours.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. This is very dear to my heart. As an old lady, if I have a little bit of sandwich left over, I enjoy feeding it to birds, squirrels, whatever. I think if there are issues in certain places, certainly have signs, "Don't feed wild animals." I think that's a good policy. You don't want somebody to come out with a bag of dog food and empty it on the sidewalk and cause problems with raccoons or whatever. But I think to find people, like me, that want to give a little bit of my sandwich to the birds, I think it's too much overreach. If you want to have signs instructing people, educating people not to feed things, sure, but an ordinance with fines, I think is too much.
Seeing no one else rise and no one calling in, did we receive any written comment?
Nothing.
I did receive quite a bit of written comment. There are signs out there that say, "Don't feed the squirrels," and have been there for about a year, and it is not ending. So unfortunately, I'm going to close public comment on this, and I'll make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation to introduce ordinance number 168421 prohibiting the feeding of wild animals in city parks and on public property. I need a second.
Okay.
And it's been seconded. Any questions? Shall we vote? And that passes 5-0. All right. Any more written communications?
No, ma'am.
Final oral communications. You have two minutes to come back to the podium with any additional comments, or call Seeing no one call and no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. I have councilmember Vega. Put the phone down and make a comment.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
Nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, not much to report, just encouragement that no matter what you feel about any politics or anything, please, as a citizen of this town, just do your due diligence on researching what's on the ballot. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. I attended the Santa Barbara County area regional, subregional for North Counties meeting, representing the city. I also met with Congressman Carbajal, with the city manager, to discuss ongoing issues that he can advocate for us at the federal level. I spoke and met with Senator, State Senator Monique Limon's representative for Lompoc regarding other issues that they can stay on the radar for us. Don't forget, there is a skateboard competition August 28 at College Park at 10:00 a.m. You can still register or register day of. There are clean air grants for agriculture, off-road, on-road, available through SB, from APCD. The deadline to apply is 9/3, so don't forget to look at that. Our pool is closed for cleanup, it's 8:14 to 8:29. We know it's an inconvenience, but it is required maintenance. I want to congratulate our financial department for getting the GFOIA award for this past, and I really appreciate you for all that hard work, and congratulations on another year of the award. And last but not least, for those of you in the art world, Santa Barbara County's art grants are now available, so don't hesitate to apply for those, and you can go to the Santa Barbara County website to do that. Thank you all for the difficult discussions tonight, for the compromise that you made, and for working hard to support everyone in our community. We will now adjourn this Lompoc City Council meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on September 7, 2021.